Want to go to a noisy social function because it's much more difficult to understand in those situations if you have a fairly mild degree of hearing loss.
Well, beyond the process of aging, there are any number of factors that can impair your hearing, correct? I mean, there could be an infection. What other kinds of things can happen to us in the course of our life?
Well, if we look at the ear, we realize that the ear is a very complicated organ.
Right, and thank you for bringing this model because this is very helpful.
Well, and it would probably help just to kind of explain briefly that how sound will come through the ear canal, and of course, anything that blocks the ear canal can cause a hearing loss. And that's sometimes we see that with wax.
Right.
And by the way, we do not recommend using cotton swabs to clean the ear. People get in there and they push the wax in, which actually creates more of a problem.
So what's the alternative? Is that that worm medication?
You can use the wax removal kit at the drugstore. If there's any questions, see an air nose and throat or otolaryngology physician.
Oh, yeah. Thank goodness you taught me this word.
But the sound then hits, strikes the eardrum. The eardrum is very, very thin membrane, which responds to very minute changes in pressure. That causes the little ear bones of the area we call the middle ear to vibrate, and what that does is transmit the sound to the inner ear. So if there's infection, for example, or damage to the little ear bones, that will also cause a hearing loss.
I see.
Now, these types of hearing loss out here are correctable through surgery or, in some cases, medicine. And then the other area is what we call the inner ear, and this is the cochlea, which is filled with fluid.
Looks like a seashell.
It looks like a little snail shell or seashell. And the little bone here called the stapes, which is the smallest bone in the body, causes the sound waves to travel up through the cochlea and stimulate 15,000 delicate little nerve endings. And then that causes the sound to be transmitted and along the hearing nerve to the brain. And when we talk about age-related hearing loss or noise-induced hearing loss, it's typically due to deterioration of these little hair cells or nerve endings within the inner ear.
Do they become less sensitive?
Well, they disappear.
They are damply physically, do you?
They deteriorate and they die. And so that's one of the things that we will see. Now, part of our research at the House Ear Institute is learning and being able now to get the little nerve endings to regenerate. So that's one of our major research areas is the regeneration of these little hair cells.
Be darned. This is an evolutionary miracle, for sure. And seeing how this, well, first its appearance is very convoluted, and yet, this is across all species on our planet. Hearing is a critical element in survival.
Paul, you mentioned one factor I would have mentioned. Remember I said we were working on hair cell regeneration?
Yes.
Many animals can regenerate their hair cells.
Really?
If we destroy the hair cells of a chicken, within two weeks, they regrow.
Now, that's remarkable.
Yeah, but humans, vertebrates, mammals, are not able to regenerate their hair cells. We're doing it now in some animals on a very primitive basis, but we have learned through the looking at the molecular makeup of the inner ear, looking at the molecules and atoms and proteins, to be able to figure out how we can change the code and allow the regeneration of those little nerve endings.
I love your use of the word "we." The fact is, the House Institute is an enormous undertaking. I was astonished. Now, what year were you founded?
Well, it was founded by gifts to my father in 1946 from grateful patients.
Wow.
And started very modestly, and now we have 180 employees just doing research and education. We have a $22 million annual budget.
And all of this research across the country is really kind of connected. You were mentioning to me that you have actually discovered the gene that's causing hearing loss in seniors?
That's right. One of my associates, Dr. Friedman, has put together consortium, which actually includes European scientists and our scientists and some companies that are in gene identification. And we've been able to now comb down on the gene or genes that are responsible for age-related hearing loss.
All right, so here's one of your research assistants here. This staff, they must come to work with a certain passion because you're in the miracle business.
Well, it's fantastic. And research, of course, it does not have the rewards that, for instance, a surgeon has where I can go in and repair a broken part, so to speak.
Yes.
Researcher works months and years on projects and fortunately sees at the end of that tunnel, something that's now applied to a patient. And that's what we try to do at the House Ear Institute and the House Clinic.
Now, you told me something that honestly alarmed me, that there is a rather commonly-used drug, Vicodin, which has now been implicated in hearing loss?
Yeah, we first discovered this, actually several years ago, we began to see patients who were abusing Vicodin or the same components, which is acetaminophen and hydrocodone. And people, many people would start to take it as a painkiller for a back problem or whatever, and then begin to increase their dose.
Yes, well, that's the road.
Right, or people were taking it for the thrill of it because it was sort of a party drug in Hollywood. And we're talking about people who are taking anywhere from 20 to 100 per day.
Wow.
I'm talking about a major dose. I'm not talking about the person that takes it as their doctor recommends.
Yeah, the prescribed rate of dose.
And these people then will develop a rapidly progressive total hearing loss.
Wow.
They lose all of their hearing. Fortunately, those patients are very good candidates for the cochlear implant.
Is that because of their relative youth?
Yeah, well, no, not necessarily. Age is not a factor. It's the relative short duration of their hearing loss because we're able to identify it right away and then immediately put the cochlear implant in.
So the duration of your hearing loss plays a role in the possible rehabilitation?
With the success of the cochlear implant. People who have been deaf for many years do not make as good a candidate as someone who just recently lost their hearing.
Well, I know one of the men who represents me in Washington DC, Mark Ruh, has been blind since birth, and he tells me over and over that he would rather be blind than be deaf, that it has such an impact on life.
Well, Helen Keller said the same thing.
Well, there we are.
And the reason for that is that you and I are sitting here communicating. I can close my eyes and we can continue to communicate. I can be blind, so to speak. On the other hand, if you were deaf and I could, and then you cannot, you have no idea. And also, hearing is 360 degrees. It's all around us. It's our entire environment. Whereas we see what we see, we don't see what happens behind us, so.
Well, even the airlines figured that out. You can watch the movie, but you gotta pay to get the sound.
Yeah, there you go. But the sound is very important, and that's one of the frustrations that people have, of course, when they begin to lose their hearing, is they begin to lose contact with the world.
But hearing is not just specific to one thing. It really touches many aspects of our life. You were mentioning to me balance, this little area here.
It's, this part of the ear here is responsible in part for our balance. And this is how we maintain our balance, is by having the fluid within the inner ear react to movements, transmit that information along the balance nerve to the brain, where the brain then is able to make adjustments. So, yeah, the ear is a very important structure.
Right, well, and of course, with seniors, falling is almost always calamity because it's the broken hip that leads to institutionalization and et cetera, et cetera.
And that's one of the major things that we see in our clinic, actually, is that about a third of the patients coming to the House Clinic have issues with either vertigo, spinning vertigo, balance issues, or dizziness.
Right. Now, help is available, and you've brought some of the hearing aids that are in use today. And could you take a minute to show them to us? Because I grew up with Grandpa Burr, who had this enormous thing on his ear and a pack that was hung on a rope around his neck.
Well, the first hearing aids were massive, partly because of the battery technology and then also the electronics. The first electronic hearing aids were invented about 1900. Since then, of course, they've made tremendous strides. I think most people would recognize this as being a type of hearing aid that goes behind the ear with the tubing going into the ear and the earpiece in the ear. And this is a very good hearing aid for someone with more of a severe loss. And then, we also then have the smaller hearing aids that go strictly into the ear. And then these even get smaller to the point where actually, I don't have one here, but this hearing aid, for example, goes in the ear also. And we have some that go deep in the ear, which some people like because they don't really show cosmetically, but they have limitations. More recently, and this is what I'm excited about, because this is a hearing aid that has really come along in the last year or two, and what it is called open fit because the part that goes into the ear doesn't block the ear. So it allows the normal lower pitch sounds to go through normally, and the high frequency sound then goes down this very, very narrow tube. And you can see how small these are. In fact, they're even coming out smaller than that. You can compare it to the other one you see, and there really is quite a difference now.
Yeah, it's remarkable. My mother, who is 85, has hearing aids for both ears. And you know, as age takes away function, she loses the darn things, you know? Or waits for me to show up to change the batteries, which are, it can be a tedious project.
Well, we also see where the hearing aid, the dog gets the hearing aid too.
Oh, that as well. It's time for a short break. When we come back, we will continue our discussion with Dr. John House about hearing treatment for senior citizens. We'll be right back. You stay tuned.
I have cash for seven to nine days. I also have a copy of my passport, birth certificate, and insurance papers.
Hi, it's me. I have water and food.
Don't forget, we'll need a first aid kit and my prescription medicine.
Got your message. I have clothes and a flashlight pack. I'll bring batteries and some tools, too.
We'll bring the radio.
A disaster can happen anytime. Are you prepared? At your next family gathering, build your emergency kit. Find the 10 essential items and more at labt.org. Just be ready. Prepare together.
Before approaching an intersection, so that's why two wrong turns don't make a right turn. Now let's learn about tailgating.
Hey, that's how I got my ticket.
You got a ticket for tailgating? That's not good. That can be really annoying.
Doesn't get you there any faster.
It leaves you no distance to brake.
Which makes it easier to get into a crash.
And it also may increase your insurance premium.
And I hate tailgaters.
Tailgating causes crashes. Back off. Watch the road.
Welcome back to Aging in L.A. The title of our program today is Have You Heard? And our special guest, and I mean really special, is Dr. John House, president of the world-renowned House Ear Clinic. Thank you again, doctor, for joining us. Now, I want to brag on you a little bit. President Reagan was your patient, correct?
Yes, he was. I saw him during his, actually during his first term. He came to see me because he was having, obviously, some problems. But it's interesting, you know, by the way, his hearing loss in one ear was due to an actor, fellow actor, firing a gun close to his ear in the 1940s.
Yeah.
And that's what knocked down his hearing in his left ear. And so when I was seeing him, discussing the problems with him, I said, "Mr. President, I think you need a hearing aid." Now, mind you, he's up for reelection. Age is an issue.
Of course.
And you know, many people say, "Well, I'm just, you know, don't want to look old, so I don't want to wear a hearing aid." The president said, "Do you think it'll help, doctor?" And I said, "Yes, I do." And he said, "Fine, let's do it." And you know, it took two weeks for the press to find it. When they did, hearing aid sales went up 75%.
Well, the value of a person who does not have that kind of strangely-placed ego.
Yeah.
Yeah, here's the genuine article, a great hero of mine. But now, was, did Nancy say, "Ronnie, I can't hear you, or you're not listening anymore"?
Actually, she did not.
Goodness.
And she was very delightful. She is a very delightful person.
Yes.
And she was very gracious, and she did appreciate the hearing aids because it really did help. I mean, it helped him both in his meetings and it helped him at home in the social situations.
Well, I want the president to be able to hear his advisors, that's for sure. Now, one of the things that is so encouraging in talking to you is that you're involved in actually helping people, taking whether it's corrective surgery or this incredible device, this cochlear implant. And I'm not sure I understand what that does.
And I think it's important that people do understand when we talk about the cochlear implant. First of all, it's a device.
Well, we have some footage of you here working on it.
Yeah, this is an example of doing this type of surgery, where we actually will go into the ear and we will place tiny electrodes into the inner ear, into the cochlea. And what those electrodes do is they stimulate the nerve electrically. And these are patients who have lost those little hair cells, so they're no longer able to convert vibration to an electrical impulse, so the cochlear implant takes over that.
I see.
And that was developed at the House Ear Institute by my uncle, William House. Back, he started in about the 1960s, and it has progressed from a very primitive device to an extremely sophisticated device that is restoring hearing to the deaf, not only the aging, but to infants.
You know, I would have loved to have been around your house with all the houses at dinnertime. Was this the table talk? Was this the research and the things that I've witnessed today?
I think the excitement of coming home and finding out that a patient has received the cochlear implant and they're now hearing was something that was very inspirational, of course, to me as a young person and as a person who wanted to do something similar.
Well, we have someone special we'd like everyone to meet. Henry McIntyre is 78 years old and works, still works, as an auditor at the Los Angeles Department of Aging. He experienced hearing loss as a young teen and shares his experiences and treatment with us.
My experience with the hearing loss goes back to when I was living in New York City in the Bronx. And I was 13 at the time. And that was in 1943, just before Christmas. And I became very sick. And what happened, I was able to get home somehow. I sort of staggered home, and the doctor, Dr. Gordon, came. They did house calls at that time. So he came and examined me and said, "Oh, it was apparently meningitis, streptococcus meningitis." So they called an ambulance, and I was taken to Willard Parker Hospital in New York City for contagious diseases. And they, it was pretty serious then, what I came down with, and they gave me the last rites. But I survived the meningitis, and in the hospital, they determined that I did have a hearing loss. And it turned out to be a hearing loss in both ears. Up to that time, I had normal hearing. On my own, I went to the school for the deaf. I knew where it was, and I went there and told them to be admitted. And they said, "Well, we'll let you talk to one of our teachers." So they did. Her name was Helen Herrick, and she was very understanding, and she said, "Henry, you don't need to go here to the deaf school." She said, "What you apparently need is a hearing aid." So from there, we were told, my family was told about this New York League for the Heart of Hearing. And so I went there. It was a nonprofit organization, and they gave me the chance to test different hearing aids without having to go to different hearing aid dealers. So I chose one, and then I went to the particular dealer. And then I was fitted with a hearing aid for the first time. And I do remember when I was home with the hearing aid for the first time, and mother opened a paper bag. It seemed so loud. Ooh, I had to get used to that. But the New York League for the Heart of Hearing was not finished with me. They pointed out they had speech reading classes, and they had practice of speech classes, and also, they felt I should go for what is called an oral rehabilitation. So I went to this Mary Wood Whitehurst that conducted the oral rehabilitation. And what she taught me was to utilize what I would see on the person's face. She included the lip reading, and combine that with what I heard. So we went through different lessons that way, and that was very helpful. And since then, that's what I do. I read lips as well as utilize whatever the hearing instrument that I have, what they give me. So the combination is very helpful that way. It's hard for people to realize at times that I may have this so-called profound hearing loss. Before I obtained the next instrument later on, I was at a rock concert. Remember, I took the hearing aid out. I was curious to see how much I would hear. It was so loud, I heard absolutely nothing. And I told one fellow that was there at the concert, and he said, "I was lucky." He said, "He wished he could turn off all that noise just by flipping a switch," see, "like I could." So it's how you look at things. In 1957, after a whirlwind courtship, I got married, and my wife and I, we moved through California. And I wound up working at UCLA. And I remember my hearing, and there was a problem with my hearing. Sort of what little was there, sort of was nose diving going down worse. So I found out there was this House Ear Clinic in Los Angeles by Third and Alvarado across from St. Vincent's Hospital. So I started going there, and that was in the early 60s. And a doctor, William, has performed surgery because fluid was building up in this ear. And so he operated and removed all that excess fluid, and so he saved what little hearing there was in this ear.
Henry recently had cochlear implant that can help most severely and profoundly deaf people to hear. He talks about the results.
One of my assistant listening devices was my wife. And so I'd say, "What is this I'm hearing?" See, at the house. And she says, "Well, oh, that's the kettle." So then I started learning what that was. And I had been feeding birds in the backyard for a good while, and I never heard them. So here, I suddenly was hearing the different birds. And after a while, I was able to understand the different birds and their sounds. Then I also started hearing these insects, the crickets. We had crickets around the place for years, I guess, and I hadn't heard the crickets. And when I'd ask my wife, I'd say, "What's this sound?" She had to listen. She was so used to, I guess, the crickets, see? And she'd say, "Oh, that's the crickets you're hearing."
You know, Dr. House, that's a quality of life issue. That's what that story is.
It's something that we see every day, too, which is so gratifying.
No, it has to be. Now, how do people contact the House Institute or what do they do to find you and hearing help?
Well, I want to emphasize that anyone who thinks they have a hearing loss should be checked by a hearing specialist at the House Ear Clinic. Of course, we do see patients. The phone number is area code 213-483-9930. That's the clinic.
Right.
Now, the institute is a not-for-profit research organization, so if they have any questions regarding our research or possibly even supporting the institute, that's the number to call would be the institute itself, which is a different number, 213-483-4431.
Well, and the support of the institute is, I mean, $22 million annual budget is significant.
Yes.
And it's amazing what we can spend money on, and important things go begging. I can't, I can't let this show end without me saying to you how proud we are that you came and joined us to help explain to people that help is available and that hearing loss does not have to impact your life.
Well, Paul, thank you for having me.
Well, we're out of time for this edition of Aging in L.A. Oh, thanks so much to our guest, Dr. John House of the House Ear Clinic. And of course, our thanks to Henry McIntyre for sharing his stories with us. And now it's time for Senior Stat Shots. Today, we have some information for you on how to communicate with a senior who has a hearing loss. It is important not to assume that he can hear and understand what you are saying if he is wearing a hearing aid. Begin the conversation by getting the senior's attention. Converse in a quiet environment with few visual and auditory distractions. Communicate in a well-lit area and avoid standing in front of bright lights or windows. Make sure your face and mouth are clearly visible. Do not eat, smoke, chew gum, or cover your mouth. Enunciate your words clearly, avoiding exaggerated lip movements or shouting. Maintain eye contact. If you have to turn away from the senior, wait until you reestablish eye contact before continuing your conversation. Use facial expressions and gestures to help clarify your message. Pointing to appropriate objects or using visual aids can also be very helpful. And that's today's Senior Stat Shot. I'm Paul Peterson for the Los Angeles Department of Aging, the people here at City View Channel 35, and all of our guests on Aging in L.A. Thanks for watching, and we'll see you next time.
Hi, I'm Renee, representing for Juventus from Van Nuys. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35, our city, our channel. You're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35, our city, our channel.
Welcome to the City Council meeting for Tuesday, July 12, 2011. We're here in the John F. Raro Council Chambers, Room 340 of City Hall, where we meet every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Want to welcome members of the public who have joined us here today and taken time out of their day to be with us, as well as viewers on Channel 35 and through our city's homepage online at lacity.org, as well as through Council Phone, which is a service of the city through your telephone at 213-621-CITY. You can call in and listen to any of the council meetings. You can follow us online, as I mentioned, at lacity.org, or on Channel 35 throughout our city's cable system, or here live in person, and in our two remote locations in San Pedro and Van Nuys City Hall, if that's closer to where you live, and you can also testify remotely from those locations. Our agendas are made available 72 hours in advance, or 24 hours in advance for our special agenda items. We have also all the supporting materials that council members read available for the public as well. And there is also our agenda schedules and our committee meeting schedules as well. If you'd like to be heard on any of the items that have been agendized for today, items will always get a public hearing either in committee or in the full council. And today, we have those split up appropriately. If you have not yet been heard in committee, a card will automatically trigger a public hearing. If it's already been fulfilled in committee, a council member will have to reopen that at the discretion of the chair. We also have on there items, sorry, in the agenda, the general public comment for items that are not on the agenda but nevertheless under our jurisdiction. And we hear that also during the meeting, two minutes per speaker, with a podium there to help guide your time and a clock. We have council members Reyes and Rosendahl, just three members we are not expecting today, Mr. Weston and Ms. Hahn. And besides that, we'd expect a full complement. So council members Alacon, Cardenas, Englander, Wezar, Corretz, Krikorian, Labange, Parks, Perry, and Zine, if you'll please join us as soon as possible. In the meantime, before we begin the meeting, I'd like to recognize Council Member Reyes for a little presentation to an important visitor that's here. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President Garcetti, and welcome back. Good to have you. I just want to take a moment to recognize, in our city, we have many volunteers, both from the neighborhoods, from throughout the city, and not the country, but today I'm honored to have an international assistant intern who's been tremendous in Highland Park. Her name is Marta Soligo. She served as the first-ever Highland Park Heritage Trust Summer Intern. She is from Università di Gli Sudì de Bergamo Italia.
Yeah.
Where she is a master degree candidate in cultural tourism with an emphasis on juxtaposition of entertainment and education. So maybe we can go far in Los Angeles with that concentration. While here, Marta spent her time assisting the Royal Sequo Parkway National Scenic Byway Program, collecting data critical to develop the interpretive marketing plan project. In this project, she used codes as historic markers on buildings for visitors to access online information from their smartphones. Her time and effort collecting data has been vital in enhancing plans to make the Royal Sequo region of northeast Los Angeles a historic, artistic, and cultural tourist destination of Los Angeles, which, by the way, also is the home of the Southwest Museum. So we hereby recognize and congratulate Marta Soligo for her commitment and dedication to the Highland Park Heritage Trust and to her contributions to the collection of the history of the Royal Sequo region in northeast Los Angeles. We wish her success for the coming year as she prepares her master's thesis, which will highlight the Highland Park Heritage Trust and northeast Los Angeles. Thank you, Marta, very much for your hard work.
Thank you.
Very good, you do. My colleague here, particularly Tom Labange, he would say we have a sister city with Italy. We have a great program, and I thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes, and congratulations. We do have now a few more council members that I want to thank for being here. Council Members Alacon, Labange, Parks, Reyes, Rosendahl, and Zine are all here now. That takes us to seven members. We're still awaiting three more of the following late members, Council Members Cardenas, Englander, Wezar, Corretz, Krikorian, and Perry. Again, that's Council Members Cardenas, Englander, Wezar, Corretz, Krikorian, and Perry. It's now 10 minutes after the hour. If we fail to reach a quorum in the next five minutes, we will be unable to have a meeting. So please make your way down as soon as possible. And thank you to the public for your patience while we wait those tardy council members. Yes, Mr. Reyes.
I should have recognized also the leadership of the Highland Park Heritage Trust and leadership of Northeast, they're with us here today as well. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Great to have them here as well. Thank you, Mr. Reyes. So sit tight, and we will begin as soon as we have our quorum. This is our final quorum call for council members Wezar, Corretz, and Krikorian. Our final, thank you, Mr. Krikorian. Our final, that gives us 10 members. Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Alacon, Cardenas, Englander, Hahn, Wezar, Corretz, Krikorian, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Weston, Zine, Garcetti, 10 members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, first order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
All right, Mr. Englander moves, and Mr. Krikorian seconds. Without objection, those will be approved. Next order of business?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
All right, Mr. Parks moves, and Mr. Labange seconds. Without objection, that will be approved as well. On Tuesdays, we always rise to salute our flag. And if I could ask the council chambers to please rise as well for our Pledge of Allegiance. And Mr. Englander, would you be kind enough to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
It would be honored. Please join me and put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic of which stands our nation under our individual liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just as a point of information, don't forget for parts of the city of Los Angeles, there's an election today, a special election for Congress for the 36th Congressional District. Don't forget to go out and vote. With that, let's go ahead and run through today's agenda. We can direct our attention, colleagues, to any items you wish to call special. We'll now go through the agenda for today.
Items 1 through 13 are Department of Building and Safety liens, notes for public hearing. The department reports that items 7, 11, and 13 may be received and filed as much as the liens have been paid. Also, there are cards on items 1 and 10.
All right, let's go ahead.
And 7.
And take out cards for 1, 7, and 10. We'll call those special for cards from the public. We'll close the other public hearings. Any specials on 1 through 13, colleagues? If not, let's take the balance of 2 through 6, 8, 9, and 11 through 13. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Those liens are approved. Next items, please.
Items 14 through 18 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay, 14 through 18, colleagues, anybody wishing to reopen the public hearings on those? Seeing none, anybody wishing to call any of the items 14 through 18 special? If not, let's take up items 14 through 18. Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay, those are approved. Next items, please.
Items 19 through 32 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Is there any objection to consideration? If not, we have 10 ayes for consideration before us. We can now go through the items. Do we have cards from the public on any of these?
25, I went and put just hold on the desk.
Okay. Hold on one second. Do we, do we have any cards from the public on any of these?
Yes, cards on 19, 20, and 31.
Okay. And we'll call 25 special for Mr. Rosendahl. Other specials, colleagues? We've already called 19, 20, and 31.
And 24 as well.
And 24, okay. Close the other public hearings. Any other specials? If not, let's go ahead and take up the balance. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay, those are approved. We'll go to our general public comment now, and we'll first start in Van Nuys. Today, Miriam Fogler will be our first speaker. After that, Donna Perman. A very good morning to Ms. Fogler.
Here's the update. Hello, can you hear me, Council, City Council?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi. We're working on getting the members on board for the retiree healthcare. The problem is that it's taking time, but we're getting it. The thing about it is if we can't get enough, exactly enough votes, because see, the problem that you did is the way you set up this contract was, tomorrow's agenda, you'll see on number six, you'll see how the contract was put together, and it wasn't very good. They put everything together, the deferring raises, all that stuff together with our benefit, life benefit. And you know, you can't put life benefit with pay raises, deferred raises, you can't. So the people have a choice, either to vote for the pay raises or to vote for the retiree healthcare. And then you got stuck with the furloughs, you know, and, you know, voting down the contract, you cut some people on furloughs. And this is a problem that you caused in this MOU 9, is that if you had just put the retiree healthcare separate from the other stuff in the name of humanity, I mean, have human dignity, these people are entitled to have the retiree healthcare. And, you know, Council Rosendahl and others who I know behind the scene, we're working on this, getting this together here to get this, so we can have a vote on it, to get it unanimously passed. And we need to have the opt-in, opt-out as an option, as a backup, because we have one problem, and you know, somebody out there in the operators, the equipment operator out there in the Hyperion, they, he told the members not to vote for that contract because he wanted the pay raises. He was tired of the, you guys keep changing it, changing it, modifying it, and we couldn't ratify it. So now, we're trying to get the members on board. So we need the city to cooperate and give us the incentive here to get these people to vote for it, because some of these people are not on furlough. We need them to vote this retiree healthcare in.
Thank you, Ms. Fogler.
Thank you.
Appreciate your comments. Donna Perman is our next speaker, also in Van Nuys. After that, will be John Walsh here in the council chambers.
Okay, it's good to see you, Mr. Garcetti. Anyway, pretty soon the 405 freeway shutdown will be here. The solution is stay away is very poor. Open up the off-ramp at 6:00 a.m. It's very late. The cars and buses will line up to go on, and it will be a nightmare. Wilshire Boulevard runs sporadically, 720 to Santa Monica. Sometimes you see a lot running close, and sometimes you have to wait 15, 20 minutes, and you see twin buses. People won't take mass transit unless they have to. It's not a good way to travel. Your job is not done until you get all the city employees having retiree healthcare. I don't understand your furlough. Do you get less pay? It was not a furlough, but a vacation. I agree with Miriam was saying, you made this retiree healthcare a lot harder to pass. Federal employees have a plan, where the employee doesn't have to be on the health plan. I myself was not on the health plan. I was on my parents', and I'm now on the health plan. And so you should have it, that that sounds like a good option, so that most people will probably be on it. So we...
If we can't get the vote...
If they can't get the votes.
...you'll be opt-in, opt-out.
Yes. Okay, that's what she was saying. Anyway, in the meantime, you're spending way too much money. You spent a lot of money on the CRA, and even if it goes away, a lot of the money that you spent previously on the CRA is still going to haunt us for a long period of time. It's like having a huge credit card bill where you didn't pay the credit. It's not going to go away, what you did previously. And if indeed the CRA is gone in the first place, and I'll believe it when I see it. So that's why the city is in a big mess that it is in right now, is because we started to make all the allotment over to the CRA, the CRA projects, the Grand Avenue project, which is still not going to be completely gone because you approved it. So that's why the city is in trouble, not because of the city employees.
Thank you, Donna. John Walsh is our next speaker. After that is Danielle Locke. Good morning, Mr. Walsh.
Good morning. John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Today is election day. You must go out. You must bury the hatchet. If you dislike Janice Hahn as much as I do, you must vote for her. We have a Tea Party invasion. Citizens United has spent $1 million in the last three days in this 36th Congressional District. It is a very, very close race. If Janice Hahn loses, then we will have Baby Huey in here. He doesn't even live in the district. He was throwing tennis balls from an open car this weekend at people in the district. We're talking now, we're talking about anti-gay, we're talking about the attack, the 10-minute attack on Janice Hahn by Rupert Murdoch, who had two or three of his closest aides arrested last week in London. We must beat Janice Hahn. If you are peace and freedom, vote for Hahn. If you are a conservative Republican who hates the Tea Party, vote for Janice Hahn. If you are a Green Party member, vote for Janice Hahn. If you're somebody who doesn't like her and think she's done a poor job at City Council, she will do a much better job at Congress. We have to elect Janice Hahn. Go out now. Stop the meeting. If you have an absentee ballot, you must go out.
Mr. President, the election is not within the jurisdiction of the city.
You did two hours on the Iraq war.
Sir, it's okay. Can you bring it back to the city?
And you tell me that city election, you mentioned the city election. Carmen Trutanich, you are scum. You are for Republican, and you want...
Sir.
...Trutanich to win. Quiet, I have my two minutes. I have seven seconds.
If you could bring it back to the city, thank you.
Attorney. And you want to arrest me? We're talking about a city election. Do it right now.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. It's nice to see you. Danielle Locke is our next speaker. Danielle Locke, just as a point of information, the election's not city-run. Whenever there's elections in the area that overlap with the city, we... Sir, if you could please calm down and have a seat. Thank you. Warren Branch will follow Ms. Locke. Good morning.
Good morning. Hello, council members. My name is Danielle Locke, and I'm a children's social worker and graduate student at Cal State Northridge, pursuing a master's in social work. I'm here today to bring awareness to the issue of childhood obesity and the National School Lunch Program. According to the Center for Disease Control, CDC Director Thomas Frieden, obesity and diabetes are a major health concern in the U.S. He reports that the United States has the highest rate of obesity in the world. 68% of Americans are overweight, and nearly 23%, which equals to 23 million children, are overweight or obese. With these statistics, today's generation of children are predicted to be the first which will die at a younger age than their parents due to obesity-related illnesses. One solution to address this problem is to improve the National Lunch School Program, which serves and feeds 30 million children per day. Today, I urge you to... Today, I urge you to support making changes to the National School Lunch Program.
Thank you very much, Ms. Locke. Appreciate your, your activism and your comments. Warren Branch is our next speaker. After that is Ron Kay. If I could ask folks to please minimize their conversations during public comment or move them behind council chambers. Shh. Thank you, Mr. Branch. Go ahead.
How you doing this morning?
Good. If you could move a little closer to the microphone, we'll hear you a little better. Thank you.
I'd like to tell the City Council meeting, like, out there in the city of Pomona, they all on top on each other about that child molestation mess out there. Now we got Light Tree Son Richardson is in it, and Leo Terrell is hiding it. I made Leo Terrell tell the judge over there in the civil trial and the sheriff's deputies about Light Tree Son Richardson. He told it, that she was a child molester. I saw her doing it, and she asked me to join into it, and I was wondering why she want me in it, because them peoples out there in the city of Pomona about to be arrested, over there at the city, at the civil trial. And I made Leo Terrell tell it. He scared, she scared, and everybody else that's in it is scared. They tried to get me in it. And I was just wondering why it ain't being arrested yet, because I already know because Pomona police officers is in it. And I got the paper right here to say Warren Branch versus the city of Pomona. I'm not from Pomona, I'm from Los Angeles, but I be out there a lot. And I made the police officer tell they was in it. Their city council meeting, at their city council meeting, they had asked me, please don't get their officers arrested. And I told them.
Mr. President, I don't believe this is within the jurisdiction of the city of Los Angeles either.
Yeah, but Light Tree Son Richardson, she live out here in this town. And I'd like to say Leo Terrell told everything about his client, and I'm a witness to it, and I just want a big giant lawsuit. You can see them peoples never showed up in the courtroom. I sued them for $25 million apiece, and they defaulted. I'd like to give this information to Mr. Bernard Parks.
If you have any information, you can leave it with the sergeant-at-arms.
All right.
One of our sergeants-at-arms will take it for you.
There's going to be an arrest out there in that town.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Ron Kay.
Your name?
Thank you, sir. You can, you can hand that to one of the sergeants-at-arms there. And our next speaker is Ron Kay. After that is Dr. Clyde Williams. Thank you. If you could move to, to the side, sir. Good morning, Mr. Kay.
Good morning, everybody. I'm here to support Mr. Rosendahl's effort to bring transparency, honesty, and a good deal on this NFL stadium to the city, something that so far hasn't transpired. But that'll come up later when he tries a second try at achieving that. Joel Kotkin has written a piece that will shortly be coming out in the City Journal under the headline, "Los Angeles Going to Hell," that I think traces what went wrong over the last 30 years of how we have fewer jobs in this city today than 30 years ago, how poverty has increased so dramatically. And he traces it to incredibly poor leadership, not just in the political arena, but in the civic and business community as well. I think he's absolutely right, and I think it's at a level of intelligence and information that you should all read and take seriously. And my own thinking is this NFL deal was a chance to pivot and turn this city around. With all the money that's on the table in this deal, the city should be profiting from it. It shouldn't be just paying off debts. We probably spent a billion dollars covering the losses of the Pink, the White Elephant Convention Center. This is a chance to begin to recoup those losses for police, for fire, for libraries, to put the public interest ahead of all these special interests that we see having controlled so much of what's gone wrong, because we sold this city for what amounts to not even a penny on the dollar in political contributions. Free tickets to NFL games won't solve anything. The NFL has deserted the city twice. They want to use our name. What's that worth to the NFL? That we should borrow money and let EG and a Denver billionaire and the NFL keep all the profits? You can do better than that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kay. Dr. Clyde Williams is our final speaker for our general public comment.
Dr. Clyde Williams, talking about two items, but they're on the same bill. The DWP gives us a bill every two months. It'll soon be every month, because they need more money faster. But that includes two elements, the water and power, and the solid waste and sewage. Oh, by the way, Public Works also has the stormwater that they get through our other bill called the L.A. County Tax Bill. Rates. How do the rates come to us? They're coming, and there are going to be a lot of rate increases during the next 10 years. I may eventually leave, but my rates are acceptable. My total charge is acceptable. But there's one element, talked about transparency. Today, we had a presentation of a potential up to 10% increase in the rate for electricity. It's going to be heard on Friday, so everyone get prepared. Here comes another rate, and another rate, and another rate. But we have a ratepayers advocate, or do we? The basic element in some of the ratepayers' collaborations, as they're called, was no rate increases without a ratepayers' advocate in place. That's a good, simple approach. Same way should be applied to the Department of Public Works' sewage, solid waste, and the coming stormwater fees, because Propo is not cheap. There's going to have to be a major increase in stormwater fees. So the rates are changing, increasing, they never go down. So we need a ratepayers' advocate, not only on one side of the bill, DWP bill, but on the Department of Public Works bill. Two ratepayers advocates. Novel.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. We have Michael Mitchell as our last speaker.
Hello, my name's Michael Mitchell. I own Mickey's Spaceship Shuttle, and I've been doing business out of LAX to Disneyland for 20 years. And I would like to suggest that the city consider having a fee for people entering LAX with a private car, as if it was a bridge fee when they go in the airport. And that way, the gestation, I mean, the congestion in the airport would force the public onto the commercial vehicles and take private cars away from the traffic and the congestion on the freeways, you know, like a $5 fee. And it also allows the police to look into the eyes of each driver, and it stops terrorism. And I think it's, it would really be a brilliant design. The flyway is failing. This is a good alternative to the flyway. The flyway has lost close to $50 million already, and the money goes overseas. And I think that we shouldn't give contracts overseas as much as local companies as well, so that the money recycles here in the city. And there's a great deal of French companies that are getting contracts now. And I'd also like to mention that the Board of Airport Commissioners, a new one, is, used to be a manager in a French bank. So thank you very much. I think that's a conflict of interest.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mitchell. That will close, yes, the public comment down for today. We'll go to items that have been called special. Our first item is item number one, called special for a card from the public. John Walsh, if you'd like to come forward on, to discuss the lien that is at 1047 West
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands, H-I-G-H-L-A-N-D-S.org, Facebooking at Mickey Jackson, M-I-K-I, email us at HollywoodDems, D-E-M-S, at gmail.com. This is a hearing protest concerning building safety report at 10828 South Avalon Boulevard. And we certainly support the city of Los Angeles in this hearing protest. Election Day, HollywoodHighlands.org. Thank you.
I'll close our comments on item number one. Mr. Parks, on item one?
I'd like to continue that for two weeks to allow the Building and Safety and the, Mr. Reyes, to work out a payment schedule.
Sorry, say that one more time, Mr. Parks.
I'd like to continue it for two weeks, so Building and Safety and Mr. Reyes can work out a.
Without objection. That will take us to, let me get the date, July 26th. That objection, we'll continue that till the 26th. Next item called special by cards, this is number seven, David Carlet, if you'd like to come forward, and then Ralph Page. Good morning.
Good, good member, good morning, members of the council. I'm here representing the property owner of 1041 North Highland Avenue. Although he's made the payment for this citation, he's done it under protest and asked me this morning to relay his intention to appeal this, if necessary, even into small claims court. He's not had an opportunity to be heard on this matter in any forum before today. Our attempts to ask Building and Safety for a hearing were denied. More importantly, this citation comes from a 2009 order to comply for a change of use. I just want to bring to the attention of the council that today, that particular location has still not received its final sign-off from Building and Safety after more than three years. It is completely at the fault of the city. It took more than one year for the city to issue the permit from the plan checkers, and it's been more than a year now to receive final sign-off for the inspections. The owner of the property has complied with every single order. He has made every attempt to receive all the approvals required. And I might add, as the person who has processed this application for more than three years now, at no point does the city had any justification for holding up this business for more than three years. I might add that this is typical of what happens now at Building and Safety. If this business had not already been open before it was cited, this is a business that would not be in operation today, and this is typical of hundreds of businesses today who try to open in this city, and it takes years and years for the city to approve their permits. So I will be providing, at Mr. Labonde's request, a formal letter, so he can review it. The citation was paid to avoid any further legal problems with the landlord and with the bank, but we do intend to move forward to protest. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Page, our next speaker? We had one other public speaker?
On this item, and the gentleman just spoke of on this issue here.
Yeah.
He's going to send the council office a letter. It's already been paid, it's, we'll investigate it if there needs further action, we will consider it. Thank you for your public comment.
Okay, so we had one other public comment. Did Mr. Page want to speak as well? Okay. All right, thank you. So Mr. Labonde will take action today?
No, go forward, but if they send a letter.
Okay.
And there's anything that's justifiable, through research with the department.
So it's receiving file still, without objection?
Thank you.
Okay. Go ahead and receiving file number seven. We'll take up number 10. And we have one card from Molly Blumberg. Good morning.
Good morning, council members. My name is Molly Blumberg, and my husband, David, excuse me, David Blumberg and I own the property at 10749 Aqua Vista. It was purchased.
There you go.
It was purchased by my husband around 1996, and has been used as a rental, rental property. When he purchased the property, the laundry room in question was there, as well as the carport out in the front of the property. This is a tiny, tiny, 700-square-foot property. And the first we got notice that there was any problem was when we attempted to evict a tenant, and they called the city. So if there's anything we can do, or if, I don't know what the procedure is for us to get around this zoning issue for the non-compliance of this little laundry room.
Okay. You're in Council District Four, ma'am? We'll see if we can get somebody from Council District Four to talk to you. Mr. Labonde? I know you're dealing with another constituent. We have one other one of yours, if maybe a staff member could speak to this woman too. I'm sure, at Aqua Vista Street. Okay. Thank you. I think somebody from Council District Four staff will talk to you. Mr. Labonde still moves, I think, approval of this. So let's go ahead and open the roll on item 10, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, that is approved. There was a card on number three. Mr. Labonde moved, if we can reopen the roll on three, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, and if, Mr., what's his name? If I can see the card real quick. Mr. Halakakis, Halakakis, if you'd like to come forward? If you'd like to, yeah, right now, go ahead. Item number three.
Thank you. Hello, council.
Hello.
Good morning.
Please, good morning. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you.
Phone number is yours.
I appreciate your, your time and your help. Sorry, things have reached this level on inspections. I have, I am a property owner, and I've complied with, thank you, I've complied with inspections, any, any minor inspections with tenants in the past. I know the inspector by name, he knows my family, and he knows I would never dodge anything. I respect the laws in the city, and when I found out about this, I acted immediately. One of the inspections was complied with and dealt with, and Mr. Kidman, Kidwell passed it. So I'd like the council to understand that I was not receiving proper notice. Tenants were hiding material from me in the inspections. So if I was given a chance of due process, I would have taken care of these issues immediately, which I have. And constructively, in 2009, the issues were taken care of because tenants asked me for, for help on, on an addition which was illegal. I made him restore it, and I evicted him from the property. So I was following the law constructively. I just was not aware of the, the inspection violation, which didn't, apparently it went to him, and he hid it from me. So I'd appreciate an opportunity to correct things. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Labonde, any direction on?
Thank you very much. The staff is here. This is a situation where there's been a process. If there's something that we could work out, ultimately, though, the city feels it's justified. So I'm looking to the city attorney. If I continue this a week, because the gentleman just came, this is the first knowledge our offices had, and also the one item, I did talk to the other citizen, who, he's going to write me a letter, they already paid their, their lien. So if I'm looking to the city attorney, is that permissible, Mr. City Attorney, to continue this one week?
That would, that'd be fine.
Okay. So we'll move to continue that for one week.
We'll continue both these items for one week.
Both? You mean the earlier one? I thought we moved that.
Yes.
So you need to reconsider.
I think it might have been six.
Okay, we'll reconsider. Well, let's, let's go ahead and continue item 10 for one week until July 19th.
Number three.
And then, sorry, item three, which is before us, and one week until July 19th. Let's reconsider item 10. We can open the roll on that. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
And we will continue that as well.
Continue. And the, and the other one, they're going to send me a letter, and I'll investigate it, but they already paid. Thank you.
And we'll continue that for one week as well. Next item that we have is item number 19. We have a card from Mr. John Walsh.
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Walsh passes on 19. Any council members wishing to be heard on 19? If not, let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote. Okay, that is approved. Next, we have item 20, and Miriam Fogler is our first speaker in Van Nuys. She'll be followed by Donna Perman. Good morning again.
What number? Number 20?
Yes, 20.
Yes. The city is, is in, is in dire mess for money. As you may know, they won't make a deal with the opt-in, opt-out. I just talked to him, because you need to buy down the furloughs. So you can't give A and G a break either here, because the fact is, if you're not going to give city employees a break, why should you give A&amp;G a break? You know what I'm saying? They should be paying interest on this money. You know, because after all, you're not paying the city employees their retiree healthcare if they're not in it. I mean, you know, you gotta cap these free, you gotta freeze this A&amp;G and charge them interest if they're not going to give you the money on time. And I'm pleading with you very much, because, you know, you guys are really, really tight with the money here. And I can see it on item six tomorrow's agenda. You know, it's right there. It's illustrated. And you can't just pluck money out of the ground or something now. It's not easy. So you cannot give anybody a break. And, you know, we can't afford to give away land, give away stuff to a private company, to private people, to make profits off of the public. That can't be done. Those days are gone, that you used to do with the CRA. So this is an absolute necessity. They have to pay on time. They can't be late, because otherwise, they should be charged a late fee, late, late, late. They can't get away with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Miriam. Our next speaker is Donna Pearman. Then we'll come back for our council chambers, and John Walsh will follow.
Anyway, vote for Janice Hahn. She's great. Anyway, so glad to see you, Mr. Garcetti. The meetings will run smooth now. But I got to say, you may not be homophobic, but I really, you really need to listen to Councilman Rosendahl. You don't take him seriously. Anyway, I don't feel the A&amp;G is paying their fair share. They get the Alkaloids. Alkaloids talk about how fantastic they are, but not paying a fair share. It looks like they're paying. If not, if we're giving them money, then that's really terrible. So, you know--
Talking about the ad-hoc, there's no time on--
Oh, yes. No time on the ad-hocs, no meetings. We don't know when the meetings are. They don't publicize when the meetings for the ad hoc is, and so that people can have their input and how they feel. And so it's just like rubber stamped and take it away. This is not right. I believe that one person said, if the LA is paying for this stadium, that we should get a lot of the profits back, and that can pay for all-- we need to be able to have money in Los Angeles. And I think we should be able to get, the city should be able to have the money, and they should be able to get a lot of the profits, maybe like a certain amount, like, I don't know, right now, 30%. They should be able to get a lot of the profits over what is necessary to run the stadium. Of course, you need to have that. But all the lot of the profits over and above should not go for some odd person that's helping out, but should go for the city of Los Angeles. The city is paying for it, and we should be able to get it back. So--
Get it back. We shouldn't be giving less profits for them.
We don't need to get profits from, they don't need to get profits off of us. We need to be able to get the profits. So let's see what we can get. Let's get some profits for Los Angeles. Yay.
Thank you, Donna. John Walsh is our next speaker. After Mr. Walsh will be Mr. Walsh again. We have two cards for you, sir.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. This is a very bizarre situation here. When you negotiate, you have two opposing sides. Here, it's the city and AEG. One side hires lawyers and pays for the lawyers. The other side hires lawyers and pays for the lawyers. But what they've done here is totally short-circuit this process that has lasted in America, America for hundreds of years. What we have here now is AEG paying the city, the money from AEG to the city for advice, for legal advice, for legal services. Well, who picked these? In fact, both, you know, I've been saying both sides are AEG. Well, this proves beyond any doubt that both sides are AEG. And this isn't just a few dollars. This is 280 plus 430. That's 530, $610,000. It's one big ball of wax. And if you speak out against, as Mr. Rosendahl did, against this deal, this is what happens. You're attacked personally. As far as these ad hoc meetings are concerned, they are being held as serial meetings. In other words, at these ad hoc meetings, many members over a quorum, more than a quorum, attend the meeting. Some of them are official members, some of them aren't, since the city attorney is just a pimple on the side of the backside of this city council. Mr. Dion, you don't know what's happening.
Sir, if you could adjust the, sir, if you'll adjust the council as a whole instead of personalizing. Thank you. That will close public comment on item number one. Sorry, on the item before us. Ms. Perry is first on the queue.
Thanks, Mr. President. I appreciate the opportunity just to speak very quickly on this. And then Natalie Brill is here with Diana Mangilglu. Am I right? Thank you. If you have any questions, if people have questions. This action allows the chief administrative office to receive payment from AEG in the amount of $280,000 for financial advisory services and $430,000 for bond and tax council advisory services for the proposed stadium and events center project for a total of $710,000. This action will not impact the general fund. AEG is paying for this. This item was discussed at the ad hoc stadium committee. However, there was no CAO report on file, so the committee could not act on that item. But again, given what we're about to discuss, I would like to highlight the fact that it was discussed in the ad hoc committee on the stadium. So the CAO was instructed to prepare the report, transmit to council. Now, the CAO has retained the Public Resources Advisory Group and KNN Public Finance as financial advisors to assist the city with financial analysis and negotiations as it relates to the stadium project. The Public Resources Advisory Group and KNN were selected from a qualified list that was previously approved by our city council and mayor, and the council file on that is 11-0012. Public Resources Advisory Group and KNN will advise on matters related to debt issuance and a guarantee of a letter of credit. Public Resources Advisory Group and KNN will also provide an independent appraisal of the proposed ground leases and convention center facility. The CAO has also retained Oerich, Harrington, and Sudcliffe to serve as bond and tax council, and Oerich was also selected from a qualified list previously approved by the mayor and city council. And for the public record, the council file number is 09-0812. So I hope that you all will recommend this action. And if you have any questions, we have two very capable people at the middle table to answer them.
Thank you. Do you want to add anything?
Council member, we also have, we need to amend our motions or instructions. Should I just read that into--
Sure, go ahead.
--the record? Instruct the controller to create a new account in the Capital Finance Administration Fund entitled Proposed Event Center Project. That'll be used to pay for costs associated with the project. To authorize the CAO to receive and appropriate funds for a total amount of $595,000 for bond council services, authorize CAO to receive and appropriate funds a total of $280,000 for financial advisory services, authorize the CAO to receive and appropriate funds a total of $100,000 to pay for audit services performed by the controller's office. So what we're requesting for is a total appropriation of up to $975,000.
Thank you. Ms. Rosendahl.
The reason these--
Oh, sorry.
Natalie Brill, sales office. The reason these have gone up is because of the way that we're structuring. The deal require additional documents. So bond council, when they put in their proposal for bid, they weren't including these type of documents. But now it looks like that that may be an option. So this is an up-to amount only. Doesn't mean we're going to spend it all. It just means that in case we pursue a certain structuring, we'll need to do additional documents. Also, we have requested the controller to audit the parking funds received by the convention center and to better understand the way the parking works at the convention center, since that's, you know, part of the proposal. So that's why we are asking for additional funds.
Thank you. Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. So the $710,000 is now $975,000. Okay. Is the financial advisory people here in the room and the bond and tax council advisory group in the room?
No, we're sorry. They are not here.
Could they not come in and explain how they view themselves and what they're doing and so on and so forth?
I apologize. We did not ask them to attend.
Okay. Well, tell us about the groups that were picked, what their qualifications are, and what their scope of work is, and what both groups are going to be doing for us.
For financial advisory services, we selected Prag and KNN. We had issued a bid to our pre-qualified list and received a total of about seven proposals. We selected two firms because each firm specializes in, has their own individual--
Expertise, I guess.
--expertise that we thought would be necessary for the deal. Both firms have strong California experience and are also familiar with the convention center debt. One of the firms was heavily involved in the Staples project, which the city had adopted in 98, and we thought that that would be necessary and beneficial in terms of structuring the bonds and putting together the proposed project. We worked with city attorney and selected Oerich Harrington for bond and tax council services. We received about five proposals. We sent a mini RFP to a pre-qualified list that we had. Oerich Harrington is very familiar with the convention center bonds that we have outstanding, and they've also, they have an office based in California. And we felt that they were the best from the group.
Both types of firms also have stadium experience also, in case we needed it. But the focus for them was, the focus for these two firms were really on the convention center and how the event center would impact the convention center, because it's really the convention center that, and the types of bonds, if we were to issue, would be involved in. So both of these firms also have other offices throughout the country that have worked on stadium deals with cities. So they do have that experience, too, if we needed to draw on it.
Okay. In the future, though, I'd like to see the scope of work, and if we have another meeting on this, be it in the council and the committee, I'd like them to come--
They'll come.
--and go through their scope of work, how they view themselves. Because, you know, the bonding is very tricky. A lot of people don't understand it. I don't understand it. And right now, I'm paying $47 million a year on a bond that somebody did for a convention center a bunch of years ago, out of the general fund, I might add, while we're cutting back on police and everything else. So the bonding part is a big deal, and I would like these folks to be able to dance in front of us and explain what they're doing, understand why we hired them, how the RFP worked itself through that process, just so that we know clearly these groups, which were spending, you know, $900,000. It's nice the vendor's paying for it, but the truth of the matter is, we're looking for those kinds of objective reports. Thank you both very much.
Thank you. Mr. Cardenas is next, and then Mr. Kukoryan. Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you very much. I just have a question for the city attorney. The fact that we're discussing this item on the floor of the council, and when we discuss these kinds of things in the ad hoc committee, or an ad hoc committee in general, having had the discussion in an ad hoc committee, does that preclude any member of this elected body from bringing any discussion forward once the item comes to the floor here?
No, it does not.
So if we have a discussion in the ad hoc committee, then it doesn't preclude that same member or any other member asking the same exact question when we're here on the floor?
That's correct, as long as it's appropriately agendized.
And if a member wants to ask any question regarding the item on the floor, are they precluded from doing so if an ad hoc committee already had a discussion?
No, they're not.
Okay. So the reason why I wanted to ask this question is because I just don't want the public to be confused and think that if we have an ad hoc committee, that that in any way reduces the transparency of discussion before the full body of this council, and that the public is not precluded from hearing or understanding, or even coming forward themselves and discussing and/or dialoguing about the item. So I just wanted to make sure that people understand that when we have ad hoc committee meetings, whether we're required to have the Brown Act or not, or what have you, the fact of the matter is we do conduct in accordance with the Brown Act when we do have ad hoc committees. I just want to make sure that people understand that we are not hiding anything, we're not precluding anybody from having discussions, and this isn't a second opportunity or additional opportunities for us to actually have dialogue and discussion and policy discussions as well. Another thing that I'd like to point out is, as I'm speaking, I'm looking at the clock here. And if I were to ask the staff some questions, and we started to dialogue back and forth in full view of the public, all of a sudden, the clock is up after about three minutes, and if the president chooses to do so and not give one of us the latitude to continue talking, the president will let us know that our time is up. We have to stop our dialogue and then wait till later to speak again. When we have these ad hoc committee meetings, we can actually speak for longer than three minutes and actually have a much more robust discussion, especially when we're talking about policy matters. In this particular case, we're talking about a policy matter that's in the couple of hundred thousand dollars range. But the overall picture of what we're trying to protect here is the assets of the people of the city of Los Angeles and making sure that the tens of millions of dollars and/or hundreds of millions of dollars and potentially in excess of a billion dollars of private funding and investment in our city is in fact being done in a way where the policy matters have been vetted and discussed, and we're doing everything eyes wide open. Eyes wide open of the elected officials and eyes wide open of the public who have entrusted us to have those discussions. My time is up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. We have Mr. Kukoryan, Mr. Alakon, and Ms. Perry. Just a reminder that we will be discussing the nature of the ad hoc motion later. This is on the services expanded to AEG and outside bonding. Mr. Kukoryan.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I also will want to second Mr. Rosendahl's questions about the scope of work and so on, but that will be a discussion for another day, as I understand it. The issue that's before us right now is whether to receive the reimbursement or the payment from AEG to offset the costs to the city of retaining these firms. Is that right?
We'll be more than happy to answer questions of scope of work if you'd like us to. It's part of, you can, if you'd like, if you have specific questions.
We have limited time, though, and right now, the issue is receipt of the payment. We'll have another opportunity, as I understand, to do that. But my question goes more to the relationship that's created by that payment. First of all, did AEG or any representative or affiliate of AEG play any role in the selection of these firms?
No.
Was any list of qualified firms or suggestions of firms ever provided by AEG or any affiliate or representative of AEG?
No.
Okay. Has any process to evaluate potential conflicts of interest been engaged in? For example, with Oerich Harrington and Sudcliffe being a law firm, have they opined whether there is an actual or apparent conflict of interest in their representation of the city as opposed to any prior or current representation of AEG?
One of the things that we requested from our applicants in the RFP was to disclose whether there was any relationship or previous work that they had done with AEG, and neither of the firms, neither bond council nor our financial advisors had any apparent conflict. And disclose there was nothing.
So it was an element of the RFP to require candidates to disclose any current or past relationship that they had with AEG?
Correct.
And these firms that were selected did not disclose any such relationship, correct?
Correct.
So if such a relationship were to emerge at some point in the future, they would be in violation of the conditions of the RFP?
Correct.
Okay.
We would terminate them. That would be my advice.
Well, I would hope that we would do more than terminate them, actually. But that's, but at least we have them now on record. We've asked the question. They have essentially said, essentially represented to the city that there is no existing or prior relationship with AEG that creates any potential conflict of interest. Correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Alakon.
I would just like the CEO to further explain how these firms were selected to do what they do. You said they came off the qualified list, but what's the selection process? Once you're on the qualified list, then what's the selection process?
Every couple of years.
And I would ask-- And I would ask-
Please talk about the incentive in the RFP. Right. Right. The pre-qualified list.
Could I ask you to speak up, please? I can barely hear you.
Yes. Every three years, the CEO's office prepares and puts together what we call a pre-qualified list-
Right.
-for both financial advisors and for bond counsel. And we've used the existing pre-qualified list that our office has, and we issued a mini RFP to the firms on those lists and made, and selected accordingly.
Okay, so what was in the RFP?
We asked- We've asked them to provide their experience and, to give us a market outlook, to give us an opinion on what a letter of credit, what are some issues that the city may be facing in obtaining a letter of credit, a guarantee, what experience they've had in bond financing, what experience they've had in financing stadiums specifically, or sports-related facilities, and-
Okay, so how many of the pre-qualified applied for the, who, applied in the, what did you call it, mini RFP?
RFP. For bond counsel, we had five applicants. For financial advisory services, we had seven applicants.
And so how did you break it, how did you get down? I mean, who were-
Based on-
Normally, when an RFP comes to us, we get information about all the competitors, or at least those who were in the final round. In this case, you're just giving us one. We don't know who the others were, so we don't know who they were competing with. And so I don't know how to measure that, because you haven't really told us why they're better than the next guy.
Sure. For financial advisory services, of the seven applicants that we had, we felt that, based on the responses, we interviewed five firms. There was one firm, sole practitioner in San Francisco. There was two firms from back east that flew in, and the two firms that we selected. We felt that it was important to have, to select a firm that had California experience-
Okay. You know what? We're going over my time, but can I just state that I think it's highly unusual, or not the best practice, for the CEO to come to us to recommend two firms without giving us a full report about the process? And so I'm disappointed that we don't have that analysis, and a verbal report just doesn't meet that standard. So when are we going to get that kind of report?
We'd be happy to put together a report, providing more detail in our process, RFP selection process, as soon as possible.
Thank you, Ms. Alakon. Ms. Perry is next on the queue for a second time. Ms. Perry?
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and I didn't want to leave a bit of information out there hanging without clarification. The figure that I stated on the amount of money AEG would be paying for advisory services, I think cumulative total was $710, and you mentioned a higher figure of $900,000, $925, I think. I just want you to clarify that that is a ceiling, and it's up to, and it didn't go or jump from $710,000 to 900, whatever your figure was. It is a ceiling figure, so it means up to. If you could clarify that for the public so that it's on the record.
Right. The $975,000 is an up-to amount. As we've moved forward in this process, we have a better understanding of what are some of the issues that we're going to be tackling and the advice that we're going, that we'll need from bond counsel and RFAs.
And that up-to amount is paid for by-
AEG.
Okay. And there's no impact on the-
No impact on the general fund.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. That's our last speaker on the queue. Anybody else wishing to be heard? If not, let's go ahead. That report will be provided, as was stated on the record, and let's go ahead and prepare the roll on what is before us. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes, one no.
Okay. That is approved. If we can take up, out of order, item 31 next. Then we have cards from the public. Should we go the cards from the public first on that? Okay. Marvin Krupke is our first speaker on item 31. We'll go to Van Nuys as our second speaker. Will be Miriam Fogler.
My name is Marvin Krupke, and I'm the principal officer for IBEW Local 11, representing approximately 8,000 electricians in Los Angeles. Like many other construction trades, our members are struggling just to survive in today's environment. With so many out of work, major developments like Farmers Field represent an opportunity for not only our apprentices to continue their training, but for our journeymen to hang on to their homes, and, as importantly, their health plans. I also serve on the mayor's Blue Ribbon Committee. That is one of the many bodies that have been reviewing this proposal for Farmers Field. Speaking from my experience as a labor leader and my participation in that committee, I have found that Farmers Field, the process surrounding this project to be not only very open, but very transparent, and I believe there's very few projects in our city that have seen this level of participation and input. Public hearings have been held all over this city. These meetings were not only well-attended, but debate has been vigorous, with principals from AEG attending, including the CEO, Mr. Tim Liewicki. They've taken the questions, and they have answered directly to the public and all comers. Based on what I see and the reports that I get, today, this process has been working. There has been significant public input, and after countless hours of staff time negotiating in the city's interest, the deal appears to be nearly ready for public review. I expect we'll all see a win-win that will result in a sound deal for the city and Los Angelinos, and also a deal that puts many people back to work. I urge you to let the process work through as planned, and let the ad hoc committee begin its next round of hearings. There are literally thousands of workers that are counting on you to conclude your work quickly so that we can get back to work. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Krupke. Miriam Fogler is our next speaker. She's in Van Nuys. After that will be Donna Pearman, also in Van Nuys.
I don't want a proposal put on the ballot where the taxpayer gets stuck with the bill to give jobs that are mostly going to be temporary. And I don't want to have to be, we don't want to be having to finance this football team, not even for the ground that they're going to play on. Okay? And the property that they're playing on should be paid to the taxpayers, the rent, everything. All the money, the proceeds should be paid to the taxpayers. If this is going to work, it has to be a win-win deal for the taxpayers here. Okay? You can't just have it one way where it's going to be profits just for them. I'm sorry to tell you, but the profits can't be off the backs of the taxpayer, especially when you have neglect here in the city here, that you're, that we have furloughs now in the wastewater department area there. Some of the members on the general fund, how are you going to be having restrooms working at the stadium? You've got people who are on furloughs. You're going to have to find a way to get the people off furloughs. We're going to get the retiree healthcare to pay them down, but you're going to have to resolve this problem, because you can't just, you know, it's, this is a, this is a city thing. You're all going to have to sacrifice to put those people back to work and not have them on furloughs.
If we could bring it back to the stadium, Miriam.
Well, I'm just saying, the fact is, is that it's going to affect the stadium, because the services being provided to the stadium will be, will be impacted by the furloughs. You need to get rid of them. Okay? You've done it for the coalition, and you don't need to take any benefits or anything away from people here, because we're willing to, we're working with the city here, and the fact is, is that, you know, you people, when you put the contract like the way you did, you make it very difficult to get anything passed with the very few members, the 300 members, and that's very hard to do.
Our next speaker is Donna Pearman, also in Van Nuys. After that will be Robbie Hunter here in council chambers.
Okay. We're talking about having all of Los Angeles paying for Farmers Field and thousands getting a temporary job. We don't want to finance this team. It was never put on the ballot. Do we even want a football team out here in Los Angeles? What about retiree healthcare for our city employees? You care about those electricians working in the stadium, and you talked about their benefits and their healthcare. Why don't we care about what the city employees are doing out here? So, you know-
There's only 300 of us don't have it.
Only 300 have it, don't have it, so we're going to make sure we get that before you worry about the thousands that are working for these fields. These are talking about these temporary jobs. In the meantime, you're asking all of Los Angeles to pay for these people having jobs that may not even go anywhere. They may be in a job where they do the work while they're at it, and they'll say, well, you'll probably get a job afterwards, and, you know, you may not even get a job afterwards. So I think we need to get a lot more transparent. We need to know exactly how much this Farmers Field is going to be costing us. All they're talking about is the benefits. All these people running over here talking about getting jobs over here. But in the meantime, all of Los Angeles doesn't know what the, what's footing the bill, what it is exactly going to cost, and I can't wait for these-
It's all the city money, because we're not paying the-
Excuse me, our speaker right now is Ms. Pearman.
Anyway, I think we should, I agree with what she's saying, by the way. Anyway, we need to have it transparent, and I can't wait to find out when these ad hoc meetings are so that we can all listen to a long conversation like what Councilwoman Cardenas was saying, so we can hear all this conversation that's going on, and I'm hoping it's not while I'm at work, but most probably will be. So let's make it a lot more transparent. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Robbie Hunter. After Mr. Hunter will be Pete Tottenham.
Robbie Hunter of the Building Trades. You know, Los Angeles has gotten to be a place, it's almost impossible for to have anything built. It was an eight-story office building that was designed to support the industry of Hollywood, the entertainment industry. It took five years to get that project moved forward, five years. You know, we have Emerson College in Hollywood again that's set up for to train people for the entertainment industry. Many cities, or even Burbank, Tacoma, LA City, right now, they're tied up in a lawsuit by a lawyer and a neighbor, that if you give them some money, the issue goes away. And this city is just absolutely, almost becoming impossible to get anything done. And, you know, the ad hoc committee, I think, was an effort by the city to look at the issues rightfully on a very important project. This football stadium, Farmers Field, if it moves forward, it could be the savior of the Convention Center. The Convention Center, for the last 30 years, has caused a hole in the city budget, a drain. I believe the last shortfall was $40 million. This football field and the hotels that we absolutely believe it'll stimulate will be a positive for the city. And the ad hoc committee, every question could be asked, AEG has answered. I've enjoyed the debates with Nate Holden and Tim Liewicki up there, you know, pulling each other's tail, and I can tell you, it's good for the city. It just will move the process forward. It allows the city and AEG to negotiate. The final product will go in front of the city council. At that time, the city council absolutely will be able to look at any issue, send it back for renegotiations, but there will be a deal for it to be looked at. To put it, and to withdraw it from the ad hoc committee, we think will absolutely be drag out the timeframe and leave it like we had with the eight-story office building, five years. Thank you very much.
Appreciate your comments. Pete Tottenham is our next speaker. After that is John Walsh.
Good morning. Pete Tottenham, I'm an attorney, Venice Neighborhood Council, community officer, and chair of the Education Committee. People have talked about conflicts of interest and transparency today, and I think what the people in this room and these chambers need to understand is that AEG is driving this process, as Mr. Walsh pointed, on both sides of the aisle. Rather than independent, unbiased confirmation of these projections from the city council, you're going with made-as-instructed numbers from accountants, lawyers, consultants that AEG is footing the bill for. Now, here's the problem. The city is $400 million in the hole. This project is estimated to cost $1 billion to $2 billion. Now, Jan Perry, Tom Labange, many of you have talked about the fact that most of this will be privately financed, but you skirt the fact that $355 million of this money for the convention rebuild that's going to be done will be financed through publicly-issued bonds, and ultimately, the taxpayers may be left holding the bag. Here's my rhetorical question to you. Why don't you do what Bill Rosendahl, Paul Krikorian, and Paul Coretts and others are advocating? Be more transparent. We had a wonderful town hall in Mar Vista with over, close to 150 people attending on short notice to hear Tim Liewicki walk through the numbers, his projection mechanisms. Every single one of you city council members should do the same exact thing. The people of Los Angeles are going to look at you and remember that you weren't open, you weren't transparent, that you ramrodded these approvals. OREC Harrington is one of the most expensive law firms in the state. I used to work for Melviny Myers in San Francisco. You've gone with OREC in San Francisco rather than a local law firm, you know, and the conflicts of interest are there. I don't think this process is being vetted. Mr. Walsh talked about the fact that AIG is footing both sides of the bill. That's simply wrong.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. John Walsh, our next speaker. Just for our speakers, if you put your voice a little further away, we can hear you better, actually, and it won't distort as much. Ron Kay will follow Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. This isn't a win-win. It's a lose-lose. The whole project's a delusion. San Diego is not giving you their team. Minnesota is not giving their team. What this is a boon for are these lawyers. This is like when you want to sell the parking, the city parking. You spent millions on lawyers, and then nobody wanted to even buy it. This is a drug-induced delusion of the mayor that there is even a project. Where is the team? There is no team. The man who runs this is called Tim Liewicki. Tim Liewicki. If you transpose the two syllables of his name, his name is Tim Wiki Lies. The whole thing is lies, and now you're going to hold, I was told, these ad hoc meetings in Liewicki's office. You're allowed to do that. Under the law that stands now, you are allowed. You can have an ad hoc meeting, and you can have the entire city council there, because there'll be no enforcement of what's going on here. If you all want to get down on your knees and make like Monica Lewinsky to Tim Liewicki, do it yourself.
Sir, that'll be last one.
Do it yourself.
You've warned you a number of times on items of a sexual nature. We can shut down Mr. Walsh. Thank you. Our next speaker is Mr. Ron Kay. You kept speaking over me, sir. Our next speaker is, sir, you cannot use sexual comments. Thank you. Ron Kay is our next speaker. Sharon Cummings will be after that. Tough act to follow, but Mr. Kay, I know you're up to the job.
John's always a tough act to follow. Contrary to what has been mentioned about eyes wide open, this is a deal that's being made eyes wide shut. You approved taking a million bucks from AEG without even understanding who or why or what was being done, as Mr. Alakon pointed out. There was no facts, there was no research, no discernment of why one firm over another firm. You're plunging ahead, you don't even have any information. You don't know, you haven't accounted for how much the Convention Center has lost and all the broken promises on how it was going to generate all these hotels and tourism and jobs and business that were never delivered, only debts to the city. You're going from $45 to $70 million a year taken out of the general fund. All of it's on promises that some incredible boom is going to happen. Where's the examination, the study? Where's the proof of that? And most of all of them, biggest single missing piece is how can you write an MOU with AEG without discerning and determining exactly who's going to run the Convention Center that we're going to be indebted for? That's the key piece in this thing. The promise is the Convention Center will bring in billions of dollars and millions of tourists. Well, where is that and who's going to run it? You've made it clear that you want to-
You've made it clear that you want to privatize it. Who but AEG could possibly run it when they've got the event center, the stadium, have the control over the facility? Where's the determination, the details of how that's going to be run? This is a premature deal and you're knuckling under demands and ultimatums from the most powerful company that has given the most money to politicians for purely political purposes of anybody in this town. They match perfectly well with the IBEW. This is a bad deal that is uncritically examined and it is going to cost the public dearly without proper process.
Thank you. Sharon Cummings, our last, sorry, second last speaker, and then Jay Handel. Actually, we have three cards. Sorry.
Good morning, council members. I will definitely stay away from any sexual references or anything like that. I frame this sort of in my own experience with negotiation, which I happen to be the person who buys the family cars. And anytime I've been confronted with a deadline by a salesperson, my response has usually been to smile and say, gee, that's nice. Now sharpen your pencil. I think that's what we need to do. And that's why I believe this motion is a good motion. Mar Vista Community Council does not support public funding for the stadium. The community council does support openness and transparency. We would definitely like to see this move from the ad hoc committee into the public realm so we can all examine this and make sure it is the deal. Because if this is that good, if it's really that good, there's no reason to bring it forward, to keep it in committee. It should be brought forward now. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. Jay Handel is our next speaker. After that is Bob Fitzpatrick. Good morning.
Good morning, Jay Handel. I'm the chair of the West LA Neighborhood Council and the chair of the Neighborhood Council Budget Advocates citywide for this year. I guess my question is this. What is there really to hide? Why can't it be brought out into the public forum, the true public forum? You know, in a matter of three weeks, we saw the bonds go from 350 million down to 270 million. But then we heard there were other components that changed underneath. You know, we realize there's three shells in one pea. We'd actually like to see the pea placed on the table so we could try and follow what shell it's under. This is where we, the citizens, have no confidence in the council. We've seen how the council handles our money in the past. We understand that this will bring great jobs and we believe it'll bring jobs, but not at the expense of other people's jobs. This city has lost a number of jobs because of the way things have been handled in the past. And going into the back rooms and negotiating in the back rooms and bringing a final deal for the public to swallow is not the transparency we look for. Now, quite frankly, to the building tradespeople and to the council, if you really wanted to expedite this and move it quickly, Philip Ann Schultz is worth billions of dollars. Let him put up the other $350 million and let's be done with it. And let him build the whole damn thing himself. Then none of us have to worry about you misusing our money in the future and us 10 or 15 years from now coming up with what we'll call Farmageddon. Okay? Another city loss, another reason for us to lay people off, another reason for us to lose more services. So, you know, I implore everybody around the horseshoe here. You know, the anticipation is you're all going to vote no on this motion and you're going to send it back to the back room. Surprise us. Prove to us there's nothing to hide and bring it out to the public forum. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Bob Fitzpatrick.
Thank you.
Good morning.
This motion presents you with an opportunity to make it loud and clear that everything about this proposed transaction is out in the open. No hidden agreements that will burst forth at the last moment when it will be too late to make any changes, which is SOP technique for some negotiators. This reminds me of a small dinner gathering I recently attended. One person who was to buy the salmon arrived with it wrapped in a butcher paper and announced to everybody what a great deal he found for this one-week-old salmon at $2.95 a pound. He was fortunate to get the last fish. The hostess opened the package of raft salmon and the smell permeated the room. It was then too late to buy fresh fish. I urge you to adopt this resolution.
Thank you. Our first speaker will be the maker of the motion, Mr. Rosendahl. Second, sorry, that closes the public hearing. Second will be Ms. Perry, then Mr. Coretts and Mr. Alakon. Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I want to thank the labor leaders fighting strong for jobs. I totally agree with you. I want jobs. I want jobs worse than ever considering unemployment is 9.2% in the country. And here in LA, it's over 10, 14, 15%. So the job issue is absolutely a no-brainer with me. We need jobs. But to the community people raising the other questions, it's just about process. If you pick up today's Wall Street Journal, just by accident, I get it in my driveway every morning from my old cable days when I had to do all the newspapers, and here it is. "A Stadium Costly Legacy Throws Taxpayers For A Loss." Today's paper, folks. And second paragraph says, "The tax hit is just the latest in a string of unforeseen consequences from what has turned into one of the worst professional sports deals ever struck by a local government, soaking up unprecedented tax dollars and county resources while returning little economic benefit." That's today's paper. It is an issue about who's going to be left holding what bag. My motion is pretty simple. It's basically saying, I'd like this to come before the full body, engage you. Look, we're all paid the same money. We all represent 300,000 people and we all should engage. We shouldn't have something thrown at us at the end of this month as the terms for a deal, an MOU, because the developer says, we've got to have it now, we've got to have it now and all that, without totally airing the subject. I held a town hall in my disgrace to do with my television show. I took no opinion. I put Tim Lewicki there and his people up there and they asked and answered and interacted in a very healthy way. Mr. Coretts showed up and sat there and listened to the whole discussion there. Why can't we, as a body, do the same thing? You know, it's just a simple courtesy to the responsibility that we should have when we're dealing with our precious taxpayers' money in the worst economy in the history of our times within our nation. And if you would just look at this, you know, all I'm asking is the city council to hear AEG's detailed presentation, ask questions of their team, ask questions of our team, and discuss the instructions of the city's negotiation team. Now, I don't want to get the negotiation team in the back room and have these private discussions. Why can't it be in the open to know what we're talking about? This is no big deal here. This is the city of Los Angeles. We are the second-largest city in the nation. And I can tell you this, this Ann Schultz guy, he can buy a team and bring a team. I'm not worried about a team coming here. I'm just worried about any hidden costs that the city and the taxpayers might be stuck with. Look, we got a $47 million bond issue where us, not you and me, but others in the past, created a convention center. That 47 million is so dramatically hurting us when we're trying to balance our budget. It's a big issue. I obviously agree with Roz Weinman. I would like to see the whole convention center concept be worked out. I want to go from 15 to 5. That's another no-brainer. I'd like to see a million square feet. And of course, I'd like to have a stadium with even a track around it. Maybe we'll end up getting the Olympics down the road as well because we would have such an energy there. And of course, we can get other hotels that will come in and multiply effect it, make a vibrant downtown like Times Square in New York. All of those are very cool ideas. All I'm asking for is that every one of us 15 stand up and understand the terms of negotiations, the terms of an MOU, put it out in the open, and then come back and say, we feel good about it. And then we have a year to work on different pieces. When Mr. Lewicki said, you either do it by the end of the month or I'm walking away, look, God bless him, and I think he's terrific. He spent 10 years taking downtown and turning it into a vibrant area. And Ms. Perry has provided that leadership to do all those things over the last 10 years. So I get no problem with him coming in and investing and being part of it. I just don't want the taxpayers to find themselves schnuckered five, 10 years later, pick up a Wall Street Journal and see it about us. That's all I'm asking for everybody here to earn their paycheck, discuss it in the open here. Let the public interact with us and let us feel good about the transparency and the openness and the healthy discussion. What if somebody watches this and say, hey, this would be a better negotiating tactic for the city if they did this? Look, I was a businessman, weren't anybody else around here. I ran a big conglomerate, 2,700 employees, but I don't know enough about this. Frankly, I have to learn and educate myself, and I think we all need to do the same thing. And I urge us all to take it back to us, have a healthy town hall discussion here, put it all out in the open, and let the democracy be transparent and open for all 15 of us. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Ms. Perry is our next speaker.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Now, the difference between the ad hoc committee and being in the council chambers, we have five members on the ad hoc committee, and Mr. Rosendahl is on that committee, but we don't have any cameras in there. We have television cameras in here. Public is invited. The meetings are noticed. They are conducted in conformance with the Brown Act. Even though they are ad hoc committees and don't need to conform to the Brown Act, we do anyway. We do that because we want to inspire confidence in the public and to make sure that the public is fully informed. On February the 9th of 2011, this council approved the creation of an ad hoc committee on the downtown stadium to review all matters related to the development of a sports stadium and event center in downtown Los Angeles. Even if you are not a member, I think most members know that they can send their staffs to monitor the proceedings in the committee. They can arrange for a briefing, one-on-one, with the chief legislative analyst. They can speak to anyone. That is their right. It's within their purview, it's within their authority to be able to do that so that as members, they can be fully informed, both through the committee process and as matters come to council. We created this ad hoc committee because we knew the proposed project would create new jobs, new tax increment, and help us rebuild the west hall of the convention center to make ourselves more competitive. Now, we decided as a body, as a council body, to create the ad hoc committee because we knew it would be a complex proposal that merits very focused attention from an ad hoc committee in a timely manner. Along with the approval of the ad hoc committee, the council also approved a motion, I believe it was by council member Krikorian instructing ITA to establish a website for the ad hoc committee, which has been done and can be viewed anytime at downtownstadium.lacity.org. The council also approved a motion by council member Garcetti, asking or instructing the ad hoc committee to prepare a list of principles and objectives, which has also been completed. I share this history with the body so that we all know that as chair of the ad hoc committee of the proposed downtown stadium and event center, I personally take this responsibility very seriously, and I know that the other members do as well. Now, what will come out of ad hoc before the end of the month is a couple of things. Number one, we'll have two more meetings out publicly as a committee, as an ad hoc committee. One will be at the Van Nuys City Hall at the request of council member Cardenas. The other recommendations will come from ad hoc to the full council. And again, I urge all of you to feel free to arrange your own one-on-one briefings with the chief legislative analyst so you can take as much time as you want to fully inform yourselves and your staff about the status of the negotiations of the draft memorandum of understanding. And when this draft memorandum of understanding comes to the floor of the city council, it will be spoken and discussed and debated in full view of the public after it has been discussed and debated and talked about in full view of the public through two more ad hoc committee meetings, one of which will be in Van Nuys. The council also took an action instructing the CLA to form a working team with the CAO's office and the convention center and other relevant departments to begin the negotiations with AEG. The council asked these department representatives to do this. The council purposely established the negotiating team and made sure there were no elected officials on it to de-politicize the negotiating process and to deliver the best and most objective proposal to the city of Los Angeles. So today, we are considering a motion by Mr. Rosendahl that would essentially circumvent or possibly dissolve the ad hoc committee, disregard the work done by the negotiating team by bringing all items related to the stadium transaction to the city council without committee consideration. Now, and I've shared this with Mr. Rosendahl, it's no secret, I strongly oppose his motion, and I hope that you will all do the same. Circumventing the ad hoc or eliminating the ad hoc does not lead to more transparency. It limits public engagement to one venue here on the council floor. As Mr. Cardenas pointed out, when we're in committee, we're not under the same time constraints, and people are much more free and it's a less formal setting in which to discuss and to ask questions and to put views on the record. It diminishes the work that the ad hoc committee has done, and that includes the maker of the motion. Disregarding the work of the negotiating team that we, as a body established, does not protect the taxpayers or the general fund, rather, it endangers the process by politicizing it and introducing much more chaos into getting this done. Committees give, ad hoc committees give members a chance to deliberate, debate, and vet items with focused attention and provide community stakeholders with an opportunity to provide input before the item comes to the full council floor. Ad hoc committees are established to deal with complex issues. Examples, the Los Angeles River. The ARA or the American Recovery Reinvestment Act funds are comprised, that ad hoc committee is comprised of council members who have some expertise on the matter. Ad hoc committees are an established practice because they work. They save time by avoiding referrals to multiple committees and allow for focused discussion and analysis on a single subject. Approximately five months ago, the council established this process for the events center proposal, and since then, all of these parties, our side and their side, have been working in good faith. We've had two meetings of the ad hoc committee and have established these principles. The ad hoc committee, as I said, will meet twice before the end of this month to discuss the draft memorandum of understanding. When it is presented to the entire council, all members will be free and able to comment, amend, make recommendations for a change, and basically fight it out. Again, I want to emphasize.
Thank you, Ms. Perry.
The ad hoc.
If you grab it, you can grab it.
Okay. So anyway, I just want to say, all the meetings have been conducted in accordance with the Brown Act and will continue to be. So to suggest otherwise is a misnomer. And I believe in the process. I hope you do, too. I think it would be complete chaos to change course at this point, and I hope that you will agree with me.
Thank you. We have Mr. Coretts, Mr. Alakon, Mr. Krikorian, Mr. Englander, Mr. Labange, and Mr. Rosendahl right now for a second. Mr. Coretts.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't object to how the ad hoc committee has handled anything thus far. In fact, as far as I know, an excellent job has been done. And I don't object to standing committees and ad hoc committees. If we all tried to do everything as a council, it would be complete chaos and nothing would ever get done in the city. But in this case, in my, hopefully, 12 years on the council, I suspect that this will be the biggest and most significant decision that I make in those 12 years. It will have more of an economic impact on the city than anything else that we do. And so, should this responsibility be deferred to a handful of members on an ad hoc committee? Or should we, for at least one meeting, function as a committee of the whole and all take a look at this? I don't believe that having a meeting where we all discuss this and ask questions and get answers in any way circumvents the process, in any way diminishes the process. I think it supplements the process. How having one meeting where we ask every question that we want to ask and get all the answers that we want to get in public view does anything negative to the process unless it's a bad idea? I'm not saying that it is. I think it's very likely I wound up supporting this in the end. But I don't see what the downside is to have every council member have a chance to ask questions and get answers before the last minute. When it comes to us after it's all a done deal and it's presented to us, I think the fact that the chance that we have much of an impact on this is relatively modest. I think once it's gotten to that point, it gets past whatever is in it is in it. I think if we have a chance to ask all the right questions and get all the right answers, there's more of a chance that we actually have some input into what the final deal is. To me, it makes perfect sense, and I think we all should have that one shot as something that will give us more of a handprint on the future of our city than possibly anything else we do while we're here.
Thank you. Mr. Alakon.
Council members, it amazes me how times change, but things remain the same. Having gone through the Staples deal, I remember some of the same issues being brought to our attention. But I like to talk about the rules a little bit because it seems that people are not aware of the rules. When establishing an ad hoc committee, all members are members of an ad hoc committee. Check your rules. Up to a majority of the members can participate. Although there are five specifically identified as official members, all of us can participate. Up to seven, excuse me, all of us can go, can come to a meeting. We can have all 15 of us there. Up to seven of us, the first seven that show up, can actually participate, and the rest can just watch. But here's the thing. Ms. Perry, in all of the ad hoc committee meetings, have more than five members showed I understand there might have been one meeting where nine members might have showed up. You're not, that doesn't ring a bell? You're not, that doesn't ring a bell? Mr. City Attorney, am I correct on the policy, on the rules?
Well, the ad hoc committee was created by council, and it did designate five members for the meeting. However, the Brown Act allows less than a majority of the full council to attend the meetings and participate, so that'd give you two additional members. And all 15 members could attend as long as the additional members do not participate.
So the fact that additional members have not been showing up indicates they're not all that interested, either they're not all that interested or they're unaware of the rules. So for those of you who really need to participate in the ad hoc committee because trust issues or you want to look good in the public or something, start going to the ad hoc committee But ad hoc committee meetings are, in essence, committees of the whole already. So I think, you know, this is really, really funny to me to watch these kinds of shenanigans when the substance is being set aside. Let me tell you, let me talk about the past, deja vu, and predict the future. You know, in terms of the past, you know, Joe Wax made the same exact complaints. You can read the newspapers and read the clippings and read the quotes. They're almost identical to the same kinds of concerns that are being raised here. And at the end of the day, he voted for the arena. And I think it was a good thing. Was it perfect? No, it wasn't perfect, but I think it has benefited Los Angeles. I'm predicting the future by saying, we will do a deal. It may not be perfect, but all the people that are talking about transparency will say it was a horrible deal. And at the end of the day, if we get a good football team in, it's going to be a great deal. If we get a lousy football team in, it's going to be a bad deal. But those are not the substantive issues. Let's get on with the business at hand. I think the ad hoc committee can do the work. If you're so interested in participating, in listening to those proposals, go to the ad hoc committee meetings. I'm not. I trust, and I have been observing, the process, so I don't have to go to every single ad hoc committee. I don't have to have the full proposal presented to me in council because of our participation in this process through staff, through observing the meetings, and through information that is given to us by all sources, including the newspapers and even Mr. Clay's blog.
All right, too much time, Mr. Alakon. Too much time. You've got a five-yard penalty.
I will vote against the motion--
Mr. Alakon, you're over time now.
Only because it's unnecessary.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Mr. Gakkorian.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Well, in response to Mr. Alakon's point, I think if the ad hoc committee were, in any respect, a committee of the whole, we've just established that the Brown Act prohibits a majority of this council from asking a single question or making a single comment at an ad hoc committee meeting. A majority of this council may not, by law, participate in the ad hoc committee consistent with the Brown Act. So that's just of no use at all. And folks, in the legislature, we used to have a saying that, "When in doubt, read the bill." And I think we should simplify matters a little bit today by reading the motion that's before us. There's nothing in here that suspends the work of the ad hoc committee. There's nothing in here that criticizes the work of the ad hoc committee. I agree with Mr. Kretz. I think that Chairwoman Perry has actually done a terrific job of getting this stuff out there. But that's not the issue. The issue that's before us today is what's written in the motion. Should this council invite AEG to make a presentation on its proposal to the council? Should this council instruct the CLA and CAO to brief the city council on its current set of negotiating instructions? Should this council instruct the CLA and the CAO to brief the full city council in open session on the status of negotiations? And should the city attorney brief the council on what flexibility it will have to amend or change a proposed MOU with AEG when it is presented? Why in the world would we not do that? It has nothing whatever to do with the work of the ad hoc committee. The ad hoc committee should go forth. The ad hoc committee should continue to do its great work. But why in the world would this council say no to any of those very simple, basic due diligence steps that we should all be doing in order to assess this project, evaluate it, investigate it, ask questions in full public view? Yes, we can all individually go and get an individual briefing in our offices by the CLA. We could have the city attorney advise us individually. We could do all these things. But the one part of that equation that's missing is that it cuts the public out. So why don't we just continue what we're doing with the ad hoc committee? That's great. It's great that we're doing that. But if we're going to be faced with an arbitrary deadline for getting this done, then I don't want to be sitting here in this horseshoe and have recommendations put in front of me without having had an opportunity to have the principal sitting at this table and say, "Well, folks, it's now or never. We've got to vote now because we're running out of time," which happens again and again here. It happens again and again here when we're faced with something and we're faced with a deadline and we have to vote and we can't, you know, do the due diligence that we need to do. Let's not let that happen on a billion-dollar project. Let's not let that happen on something that's going to change the face of downtown Los Angeles for a half a century. Let's not let that happen on something which might turn out to be a terrific economic engine for the city, or it might turn out to be a tremendous drag on the general fund. We don't know yet. Let's find out in the full public view in this room.
Mr. Gakkorian, Mr. Englander.
Yes. Thank you. You know, as the new guy, I guess I've got some questions here, just in trying to figure out exactly what, you know, I've heard a lot of these arguments on both sides about the benefits of having an ad hoc committee, why they were first established, why we're doing them, why we shouldn't be doing them. Perhaps the question should be, should we have any committees at all in the city of Los Angeles? And we should do everything in open session. From what I've heard, and I've got some questions for the city attorney, and according to the motion, it says an open session, and I keep hearing dialogue about backroom deals and the fact that all council members can't participate. So I've got some questions to try to figure that out and get my own arms around this to make a decision. And first of all, it says that we're asking the CLA and CAO and city clerk and others to get involved in this process. Have the CLA and CAO been attending the ad hoc meetings?
Yes, they have.
They have. And has the city clerk, are they actually recording these meetings?
Yes, they are.
Okay. And if the city, and they've been open to the public to participate and posted, just as the Brown Act does with all of our other committees?
Yes, it has.
Okay. And how many, how many maximum, and I think it was stated earlier, I just wanted a clarification on this, the maximum participation from council members, how many can attend and participate in an ad hoc committee meeting?
It's somewhat unclear because the Brown Act language, the language in the Brown Act is referring to a standing committee. However, if you just use that same language for an ad hoc, the attendance of a majority of the members of a legislative body at an open and noticed meeting of a standing committee of that body cannot attend, I'm sorry, can attend, provided that the members of the legislative body who are not members of the standing committee attend only as observers. So in other words, two additional members of the full body could attend the ad hoc--
So seven total.
Seven.
Seven.
Anything over seven, they could attend, but they could not participate. They have to attend only as observers.
Okay, so this whole body could attend. Seven could participate.
Correct.
And however, though, all staff can also attend?
That's correct.
Okay. And then of those, of those seven that could attend, of the ad hoc committees we've actually had, how many council members have actually attended those previous meetings?
How many have attended?
How many have actually attended and participated?
Well, I really can't answer that question.
Does anybody know the answer to that? City clerk might know. There's two meetings. How many, how many council members have attended those two meetings in addition, in addition to the five, in addition to the five who were appointed to the ad hoc committee, were allowed two more? I would just want to know how, which two have participated, and has there been a third that has had an issue? I want to ask the chairwoman of the committee.
You know, I'm not the official record keeper, but to the best of my memory and to my ability, I don't recall seeing other members in the audience. They may have sent staff people. Perhaps they've been listening on the box so they can hear it through the audio, but to my knowledge, I haven't seen anybody else.
Okay, so we haven't even had--
But that doesn't mean their staff--
So we haven't had the issue, it sounds like, yet, where there's been an issue that we've had more than seven wanting to ask questions and participate, which has been the arguments that are being made to bring this into full session. So I'm not quite sure where that's coming from yet on this. And then my last question on this, then, is have we gone into, because they keep saying backroom deals, and I hear that, and I've got some serious concern over any backroom deals and transparency--
Sir, Englander--
My last question, if you could. Have we gone into, on those two sessions, into closed session at all?
No.
No.
Not at the moment.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. Next, a call on Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think there's an important phone call. Make sure you get that. Colleagues, let me try to sift through this and bring some resolution to this. Sometimes we build up kind of dichotomies that are a little stronger than what the reality is, which is a few different points here. Process point number one. We need to make sure that ad hocs, which we have treated as formal Brown Act bodies always, are formalized as such. I was gone last week when that was sent back to my committee. I waved that out because of the importance of formalizing that. I didn't need to see it, and I can guarantee it's going to come out of committee and I'm going to say yes. But that's an important protection in the future. It is not an indictment of past practice because we are treating those ad hoc committees that way. If there's ever an error that's happened to normal committees or ad hoc committees where something didn't get up, we've dealt with that with the clerk's office. That happens very unoccasionally, but if it happens, we make sure that people not only have it posted in public places, but it's on the internet, that we push that out in our personal newsletters, et cetera. So let's fix that. Let's do that quick. Point number one. Point number two, the idea of having a full hearing. I agree, Mr. Gakkorian, with that motion that all those things we shouldn't fear and we should do. In fact, we can achieve them, and as council president, I can make sure that they are achieved, that we schedule that. Things don't have to be stamped to committee always. They don't have to be even a Rule 16. I can, as council president, and we will, have day or days set aside or item or items set aside specifically to talk full council about anything. We do this with budget. We've done this with infrastructure. We've done it with forward planning. And I think this is a significant enough item that we will make sure that that happens here too. And to any folks who have any doubts that ad hocs aren't a part of the process, whether they're not open, I would commend you to the ad hoc committee on the river, which has just been about as vibrant and as open. If we need to get things televised, we can televise them. We do that with the ad hoc committee on economic recovery and reinvestment. So we have the ability to make sure that it is even more and more open, because I do agree, there's going to be great suggestions out there. There's going to be people who look at the deals, et cetera. Process point number three, Mr. Gakkorian raised, not enough time. We, I think it's a very important point. We need to make sure that we don't have anybody else's deadline, but we have the deadline that we need to be able to make a good decision, to not let something go away, but at the same time, have appropriate time for both the public and ourselves to think things through. Someone else's deadline can't be ours. I will take the CLA's advice on what is before us, not somebody else's. So I would say the following. I don't believe that we don't have an open process, and I don't believe that committee work is any less open than full council. And if people want to have things more televised and more open and come and attend them, I would encourage you to do that. And I can work the logistics as your council president, making sure ITA televises stuff, work with Ms. Perry to make sure that happens. Mr. Rosendahl's motion does a good thing, which is to press forward with scheduling here something full that won't be, oh, by the way, this is also the day you have to vote on it. I give you my word, that's not going to happen as long as I'm council president. So let's work to the date. It sounds like there's about two more weeks worth, maybe three of two ad hoc committee meetings. Let's maybe take this motion and affix a date certain to it to make sure that everything happens, it's in the motion, because those are good things. And we'll say that that hearing where we hear then the terms of the deal, which we all want to know, which the public all wants to know, which we have some inklings of, but it's a moving target a little bit because it's being wrapped up, that we can have that within a couple of days afterwards. And that would be a first all-day hearing here on that. We can even make it the full subject of an entire council meeting with the idea that, of course, then, we take that and hear from the public, that we have other opportunities for people to come in, comment, give any suggestions, and that that is not the day that we are voting on. I believe that's the process that we have to a large extent, but let's make it explicit. I would love to have the folks that we're going to be doing this deal with, that we've been talking to in private through our CLA's negotiations, come here and publicly make that deal, because if it can't sell itself, quite frankly, it shouldn't go forward. If it does sell itself, quite frankly, people who are critics should be able to support it as well. I think we have that all. We want to protect the public purse, and we want to make sure there's, you know, there aren't overly optimistic prognostications. The Cincinnati case was a case where government did it bad. L.A. Live and the Staples Center was an example of where we actually did it good. The Convention Center was an example of where we did it bad. We are learning over time. When some folks hunger for this whole, like, where's the outrage and the critics, et cetera, it's because we have a CLA who, not Ron Deaton, who has gone, Ron did a good job, but the number two is the number one now, and he's the man who actually negotiated on the Staples Center and has the knowledge. So we start at a place of increased knowledge and experience. So we are actually been well-served. The public has been well-served by those negotiations, because quite frankly, our CLA's are hard-ass about this stuff, and will continue to be for the taxpayer money. He doesn't want on his watch to be the guy who gave away the bank. And so we'll be able to have that discussion here in open session, and I will assure people to do that. So maybe what we can turn this into is a friendly Rule 54. It can be accepted with that amendment, and we'll fix that date right now, so nobody has to worry with the promise that's not the date we're going to be voting on it. That would then achieve what we are trying to get. Otherwise, let's not have the committee system at all. Let's not have the discussions we have in education neighborhoods. Let's not have the ones in Plum. Let's not have the ad hoc River Committee. Let's not have, you know, ITA. Let's not have Jobs Committee. Let's just have everything here all the time. It would be great. I don't know if you can fit into your schedules. Mr. Englander is very eager. He's a new guy, you know? Can't keep calling yourself a new guy forever. But in the meantime, let's give the public that, what the motion intends, which is the transparency, that that's going to happen. Let's not exaggerate that the ad hoc hasn't been open, but let's make sure that gets televised. It's with all members here. It's nothing else on our agenda, and it's not the day that we're voting, nor is it the day before we're voting. It is the beginning of the next phase, like we do with the budget, of bringing it to the full body.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Reyes.
Can I ask our CLA, Mr. Miller, to come to the table? I think one of the notions that prevails in this discussion is trust. Trust in information, trust in process. We've heard assertions that we're being pushed in a direction because of a certain deadline by the AEG group. Now, is that a fact, that we are being told there is a certain timeframe or deadline?
Yes, that is, that is a fact. They have indicated that they need to know before the council's recess whether there is a deal to be had with the city with one provision. They understand that whatever you do now is going to be a non-binding MOU. You cannot bind yourself into any agreements until the EIR is done and certified. So what they have said publicly is that they're spending a great deal of money themselves without any promise of ever getting it back, and they don't want to continue to do that if they don't believe that a deal is going to be possible with the city.
You have offered advice, the CLA advises the council on policy in all of our committees. Is that correct?
Yes.
So when we look at what you are advising today, in your best judgment, do you feel that, given what we've already conducted in the ad hoc committee, with all the discussions that have occurred, do you feel that we are being hasty in how we are making decisions?
I do not. But let's be clear, the Rule 54 is a process issue.
No, I understand.
Regardless of what this council decides to do on that issue. But no, I do not believe that we're being hasty. We are developing a lot of staff time and a lot of consultant time to work these issues out. But the fact of the matter is that whatever deadline notwithstanding, whatever deal that gets brought forward here for the council to consider and for public input has got to be in the best interests of the city. We're working very hard to get there, and I believe that it will be possible to have something out for you to start to consider. I do not, we are not rushing things at the expense of the city, no.
So the deliberation in the committee is a product of a lot of other discussions that speak to details and nuances that allows you to offer us the best advice?
Yes.
So when we look at procedure, at this stage of the process, do you feel, I mean, I'm hearing the words, I've heard the words backroom deals, to do our job, we should work, given what we're paid-- should work, given what we're paid. The work we're doing does reflect the amount of time, quality time, valuable time, that is focused on doing what's best for the city. Would that be accurate?
Yes.
Okay. Colleagues, I'm going through these questions because there is a very strong effort to do what's right. There is a very focused effort to elaborate on points that are being raised by Councilman Rosendahl. I understand the sense of mistrust or distrust. Yes, Anshut is a billionaire, multi-billionaire. AEG is a multimillion-dollar entity, and yes, we are a city that needs jobs. We need to find a focal point, a point in which we can think about what's best for the city. And I believe the deliberations, the advice, has gone through a very vigorous discussion and very thorough, thanks to leadership of Councilmember Perry. But I appreciate Councilman Rosendahl, who sits in the committee, who raises these questions. But I sometimes get taken aback by some of the comments, and what they sound like accusations to me when it's being asserted that we are somehow doing a backroom deal, when I know we're not. Why give that impression? I am not sure. I don't understand what we gain from that. But we -- this is America. We can speak our piece, understand our points of view. But I just wanted to express to the public, to my colleagues, that I strongly feel with the guidance of the CLA that we are trying our best to do what is the most expedient, but also most constructive for the city and stimulating an economy while making this a greater city. And I just need to put that on the record.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Cardas.
It's good you're sitting there, because I'm going to ask you some questions, Mr. CLA Jerry Miller. Isn't it the case that the Ad-Hoc Committee process that is handling this proposal from a third party about building a stadium, partnering with the city, and providing resources so that we could rebuild a portion of our Convention Center, isn't it -- the way we've been handling ourselves, and as the process has been followed and implemented, is it possible for us to actually do anything that binds this city without bringing it to the floor first?
No.
Can you elaborate a little bit more? Because I know the answer's clear, but...
Well, again, only the City Council can ultimately bind the city. There is no other body that can do that.
So the Ad-Hoc Committee cannot bind the city of Los Angeles?
No, it cannot.
Okay. Only the City Council, by having a motion before them and voting on it and getting a majority, or whatever the threshold happens to be for that particular vote, it needs to be eight or 10 members, et cetera, depending on the kind of motion it is. Only by our participation of the majority of the council or a supermajority of the council can we, in fact, bind this city to something, correct?
That's right.
Okay. So the reason why I wanted to ask that is because after all this dialogue and last week's dialogue or what have you, it's sad that Mr. Rosendahl keeps casting aspersions with the language in his Rule 54, the motion that he had last week, talking about transparency, et cetera, casting aspersions that we have something to worry about, that there's an urgency here that we need to be worried about. And, for example, this Rule 54 is saying, "Don't handle this through the Ad-Hoc Committee. Bring it straight to the floor." And the fact of the matter is, is there any reason for us to believe that prior to July 31st, this council will not have the opportunity to discuss what has gone on so far before July 31st? Is there any reason to believe that this council will not have the opportunity to discuss up-to-date what's been going on so far through the Ad-Hoc Committee?
No. I believe Ms. Perry indicated there are going to be two more Ad-Hoc Committees before the 31st.
Okay. The reason why I wanted to ask that question is to just, once again, in full view of the public, make sure that people understand that there's nothing for them to be worried about. And the fact of the matter is, I mean, my colleague, Mr. Rosendahl, said a few times, you know, that we should earn our pay or what have you. We should handle this on the floor of the City Council, et cetera. Well, with all due respect, all five members, I'm very proud to say, all five members have shown up to the Ad-Hoc Committee meetings so far. And in addition to that, we have yet to run into the possibility of violating the seven or eight rule of how many council members can actually participate in those meetings. We haven't even challenged that. So we haven't had even one more, or two more, or three more council members show up to the Ad-Hoc Committee, where we find ourselves in a quandary. Can they or can they not participate? So I encourage my colleagues to participate. In addition to that, to just add to the drama, Councilmember Rosendahl, if you believe that there's backroom dealings going on, can you please turn in the backroom dealer before the public? Please name the backroom dealer to the public. Thank you.
I'm not going to call the name of the next person to speak, but it's the Councilman of the 14th District, Mr. Weezer. I just didn't want to be confused with the last question. Thank you.
Thank you. That's not me, Tony. Colleagues, this is very simple to me. I've been in this council where, too many times, we've been thrown some important decisions to make with very little information. And like Mr. Corrette said, this is perhaps one of the most important decisions we will make. No one is criticizing the work the Ad-Hoc Committee is doing. No one, at least on the council, is saying that there's backroom deals going on. And there's nothing salacious going on in the Ad-Hoc Committee. And even if we keep it there, it's transparent. It's open. That's not what this is about. I want to thank Mr. Rosendahl for simply saying, "This is a very important decision. Bring it to full counsel. Get a briefing. This is coming up soon. It's better for you to start thinking about all these issues with the benefit of the committee of the whole discussing it." I'm sitting here sometimes, and I'm thinking, "Oh, that's a great point, Mr. Weston made." Or, "Wait a minute. What about that?" Or, "What if the public, they come up?" There's some benefit to that process going on, as opposed to saying, "By July 31st, you have to decide, and here's what you have to decide." Maybe it hits the public, and we get feedback, and we're not going to have enough time to do that. It's very simple. Come, brief us. This is a very important decision coming your way. This is -- some of the issues, start thinking about them, and the Ad-Hoc Committee keeps going forward. There's nothing wrong with that. It's very simple. Last week, we discussed the issue of the Brown Act and whether it should apply to Ad-Hoc Committees. The fact of the matter is, whether that comes back to us and we all vote yes, it's not going to apply to this Ad-Hoc Committee. By the time we get that ordinance written by the City Attorney's Office and comes back for us for final approval, this process will be long gone. It may apply to future Ad-Hoc Committees. And, Mr. Rosendahl, I want to thank you again for doing that. It's a very simple thing for us to do. We already do it. Why not just codify it? These are simple motions, easy motions. It may just take a half a day of us council getting together to get that briefing, to try to start thinking about these issues with the collective wisdom that we all have to ask those very important questions at that time.
On the cue is Mr. Rosendahl, but do you have a quick question, Ms. Perry?
No, I have a very long, solid...
Okay. Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Rosendahl.
At least 20 minutes.
Okay. Mr. Rosendahl.
It's about enabling people and their bad behavior.
The great Councilman of the 11th District, Bill Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. With all due respect, Mr. Cardenas, I'm not implying anything. And I believe in Ad-Hoc Committees. Last week, all I wanted to know was the rules about five of us meeting privately without staff with no notice given in the Brown Act. I just wanted clarity, and I was shot down as disingenuous and grandstanding and all that. So that was that story. The story today, and I will second Mr. Garcetti's motion, which is, we're going to have two more Ad-Hoc Committee meetings. I don't know the dates or the times. I just heard one will be in Van Nuys. I just heard those two mentioned today. And then there will be a council meeting where the terms of the MOU will say what? What are the negotiating tactics? So that the full council can hear that discussion. That's Mr. Garcetti's motion, which I will second. So two more Ad-Hoc Committee meetings, then the council can get a full, healthy briefing, and then, after that, reflect on it, then vote on an MOU. I don't think an MOU is the beginning or the end of the world, but I certainly believe that all of us should be clearly aware of what it is. And not like today, I get a motion here with no backup paper. I get it all the time in committees and stuff like that. This is, as I think both Mr. Kocorian and Mr. Corrette and Mr. Weezer have said, it might be the biggest decisions we all make at this point. So I am very happy with the interaction that just took place today. The labor union, the community people, Ms. Perry, all my colleagues opening their mouth and saying a few things about this and that. That's all very healthy. So what I look forward to is the two more committee meetings. Then I look forward to you, Jerry, telling us what is in the MOU and how did you negotiate that. We need to know that in public. What's the big deal? This is a group that wants to come in and finish off their projects that they've put billions of dollars in. I'm all for that. I just don't want us to be hidden with any additional costs. And if it can be in the open, that's what I believe in, so everybody can participate. So I second his motion about letting this come before the full council after two more committee meetings, so you all can engage in this issue, understand the terms of the MOU, understand the negotiating points. Reason I didn't want to meet in private, you said something to me, Jerry. Well, some of this is confidential. What's so confidential? We're talking about money in a deal. That should be a public discussion. What are we hiding some games with that? I don't believe in that, Jerry. Why do we need to have these private meetings and some of this stuff cannot be public? Explain that to me. I'm naive.
Well, Mr. Rosendahl, it will all be public. At one point, it will all have to be public. However, part of this process is having discussions amongst the parties and working out issues that need to be done deliberately, and, to be quite blunt, not in public.
Why?
One of the biggest issues right now has to do with the guarantee. That is going to be one of the most important issues to you.
Guarantees?
Guarantees. That can be a very complicated process that may involve other parties other than AEG. So if we discuss ideas on guarantees without feedback on what might work and what might not, without an opportunity for them to talk to lenders, to talk to partners, to talk to other things, what we may be doing is foreclosing options for guarantees that are going to be in the city's interest. So that is one example of something that we cannot have an open discussion on during the negotiations. When a proposal is done and the guarantees and all of those details behind those are laid out there, we can discuss why we came to the conclusions and the recommendations that we came to.
Before we vote on it, as a...
Absolutely. In public, before you vote on it. But if you have those discussions, when the two parties haven't even agreed on what they're going to look like, and when AEG has not had the opportunity to figure out whether it's going to work on their side, you may foreclose options for the city that will protect the taxpayers.
Okay. Well, that's an important point that, obviously, the discussion will continue on. But I am looking forward to the two more Ad-Hoc Committee meetings, Ms. Perry, and I'm looking forward to a full discussion about the terms of a tentative agreement among ourselves, so everybody can engage in it, the public can engage in it, before we get something that we need to vote on. And I don't believe in time certain. Just make it very clear. AEG's invested a lot downtown, and it's in their best interest to make this deal work. And it's in our best interest to protect the taxpayers. That's all we're talking about.
Very good, Mr. Rosendahl. Thank you very much. Clarification, Mr. Garcetti?
Yes, just, colleagues, procedurally, this gets a little complicated, so let me tell you what I have to do as the motion, per advice of the city clerk and the city attorney. I would move on this to, basically, I talked to Jerry Miller, the 29th, and to be clear, the 31st is not a day that we are going to be voting on whether we approve things. And I think both, and Jerry Miller can say this on the record, AEG understand that, and we understand that. That's a day just for a draft of an idea that's non-binding to be released, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So it would come, I will schedule on the 29th, which is a Friday. We might have some presentations. We'll try to keep it light, but if there are some presentations, we'll say, starting at 11:00 or 11:30, that what we'll try to do is exclusively just talk about, have the folks come here from AEG to make a public presentation, have anybody else that we want to be able to discuss stuff, just for the presentation of now what has been tentatively drafted, not agreed to by anybody, drafted. So that comes on the 29th. But in order to do that, since this isn't even yet before us until we take 10 votes to assert Rule 54, the easiest way to do this is to say, "Continue this," so it stays here, and you have the predictability that it is here till the 29th. And that way, it is here on the 29th as an agenda item. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Ms. Perry?
Okay, thank you.
And that gives time for the Ad-Hoc. Sorry to have it too, mates.
All right. You know, I'm not going to play this enabling game. I'm not going to continue to do this. We have a process. I already said we will have two Ad-Hoc Committee meetings before the end of the month. The end of the month is July 31st, unless, you know, somebody's operating on another calendar that I don't know about. Okay? So the result is the same. We'll have two committee meetings. It will come to council. I oppose this motion by the very nature. A Rule 54 is a hostile act, because what it says is, "Yank it out of committee. I don't like the way things are going, and I'm going to take it out." Now, I, in my experience, I've only done a Rule 54 once, and that's when a chair of a committee kept one of my motions in his committee for almost two years and wouldn't schedule it, wouldn't act on it. And, you know, we tried to work it out, but we couldn't. I can't even remember whether I was successful in doing that. Now, if you want to, if you got a problem with the way the process is gone, or you want to put your imprint on this, there's many ways to do that. And coming to council with a draft MOU will be your big chance to do that. Or if you're upset because you're not on the committee, it's Mr. Reyes, myself, Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Labange, Mr. Cardenas. You know, again, it'll come to full council. You'll have your chance to make your mark again. If you've got some kind of an issue, you can obviously introduce motions now. Nothing prohibits you from doing that. They can go to Ad-Hoc. You can come and speak about them there. We can fight about it, debate it, discuss it there. This whole thing, I was here as a staff person during Staples. Now, you know, I don't see Greg Nelson out in the audience today. So, you know, I know Greg and Bill have been working together a little bit. I don't see John Semkin, but, you know, clearly, we represent the city of Los Angeles. So, you know, I like John, and I like Ed, and they're wonderful people, but I don't represent the city of industry. I represent the city of Los Angeles. I see Ron Kay here, and, you know, Ron has a blog, and I know a lot of people in politics like to read it. So I'm not sure what's driving this chaos or this desire to descend into chaos. We have de-politicized the process. We've had Jerry negotiate this. All I'm asking for, and what I want to do today, is to vote up or down on Mr. Rosendahl's motion. I think it's great that we'll have a full, single-subject council meeting, but, Mr. Garcetti, I don't want to amend that motion as a friendly amendment. I would like to separate it and vote, vote it up or down. Okay, it's, all right. Well, I don't, however, however we want to do this, I think we should either vote to oppose Mr. Rosendahl's motion, which is what I intend to do, and, quite frankly, since I'm the chairperson of the committee, I got to tell you, if I'm the only person who votes against it, that's fine with me. Okay? I'm perfectly comfortable with that, because I believe in the process, and I'm going to fight for it. And I want to fight for reality. And what is reality? Reality is two more committee meetings than it comes to full council. Anybody who wants to come and listen, send a letter, make their imprint in committee, they are welcome, and they always have been.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Mr. Alacon?
Councilmembers, we have spent approximately more than an hour on a non-substantive issue. I would rather spend that time talking about the potential for a stadium and a new Convention Center. But we have wasted our time talking about something that is not a problem. I say it's not a problem because it has not been demonstrated that there was a problem. In this case, all members have the opportunity to participate in Ad-Hoc Committee meetings as long as there's not more than seven present. To date, there have never been more than five present, as far as we can tell from information at this meeting here. So there was no problem. If members want to participate in the Ad-Hoc, go to the meeting. If there are more than seven who show up, then we have a problem. Then bring it back, and we'll consider it. But I think this is all to do over nothing. I respect Jan Perry's comments, and I respect Jan Perry as a human being, although we hardly ever agree. When we do agree, there's got to be something to it. In this particular case, I think we both agree that the process has been fair, that the process has been available to the public. The process has been available to all the council members. All the information is attainable by all those various elements. There has not been a problem. Why are we feeding this notion that motions just get introduced because we have an appearance, or we want to create maybe an appearance that there's a problem? That's not the way to do business, folks. That's not the way to do business, folks. That's not how we're going to get this deal done, and it's not, it's not helpful to the process. Now, I urge we just be done with this. If it, Mr. Rosa, I will say this, if it becomes a problem, I'll support your motion. It's not a problem to date. I don't think we need to amend something that's not a problem. And so I would urge that we just vote against this, allow the ad hoc committee to continue its work. And by the way, for the public's sake, on Channel 35, let me make it very clear, Mr. Rosendahl is the vice chair of this committee. He is watching your interests every time this committee meets, and I'm sure he will be a fervent advocate for those who are skeptical of this process. And then, by the way, I would ask the city attorney, when this does come to council, any hearings that have been heard, had in the ad hoc committee have no relevance relative to the public hearing requirements of the full city council. Is that not correct?
That is correct.
So the public will have every opportunity to weigh in at the full council when all of this comes before us. Let's respect the president's selection for the ad hoc committee. Let's respect the chair of that committee. Let's respect the five members of that committee. Let's respect the process of the city council that has, beyond the requirements of the law, adhered to the Brown Act relative to this ad hoc committee meeting. Let's move on and talk about substance, not hyperbole.
Thank you, Ms. Alacon. Mr. Cardenas.
Question to the CLA, Jerry Miller. Jerry, it was made clear in the last ad hoc committee, this last ad hoc committee, that you are available to brief any one or two or three or four or five, et cetera, members of this council in their office at the request that you would actually brief them about the negotiations so far to any member of this council, correct?
Correct.
Now, if you brief a member of this city council, is that council member not allowed to share that information with the public? You know the answer to that question, although you know it might not make a lot of sense to share certain things with the public. However, that's not my question. My question is, I'll be clear, if you brief a council member in their office, for example, is that council member not allowed to share that discussion with the public?
In that instance, they are allowed to share that information with the public, yes.
Can you make it really clear? I wasn't sure what you said.
In that instance, my pause is, if you were briefed in a closed session as a body...
I'm not talking about that.
Exactly. That's why I paused. If I'm briefed, if I brief individual council members, it's their prerogative to do with what they want with that information.
But the reason why I asked you that question is because the ad hoc committee was going to meet with you and the staff so that you could bring us up to speed, up to date as to what's been going on in the negotiations. And then it was council member Rosendahl on the record who spoke very loudly that day and said that I am not going to go into a closed session with the staff. I think everything should be done in full view of the public, and I'm not going to do that. I'm not going to do that. And as a result of that, council member Perry said on the record, we are not going to go into closed session on this. Council members, if you want to meet with Jerry Miller and the staff to get up to speed, you're welcome to do so. You acknowledged on the record that you will make yourself available to brief any council member in his or her office, or they want to meet in a coffee shop, I'm sure you'll oblige. The bottom line is, that was made clear, correct?
Correct.
Now, my question again, there's nothing that keeps any council member from being briefed and apprised of what's going on in this process so far, up to date, and there's no law or anything that precludes council member Rosendahl, or council member Garcetti, or council member Perry, or council member Cardenas from actually sharing whatever you discuss in that setting with the public. You can write a memo, you can write a book about it, you can go straight to the LA Times or CNN, and you can tell them every word of what happened, correct? There's no law that precludes any of us or no rule that precludes us from doing that.
There is no rule that precludes you from doing that.
Exactly. So that openness and transparency is held within each individual of this council, and if an individual of this council feels that there needs to be more transparency or more power to you, have at it, have private discussions or not with the staff, take whatever happens in committee, and then just repeat it all you want. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Mr. Dion O'Connor, city attorney, for clarification.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to clarify the Brown Act Code section, what it states, following up on that last colloquy. The CLA, for example, can engage in separate conversations or communications outside of a meeting, a Brown Act meeting, with members of the legislative body in order to answer questions or provide information regarding a matter that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the local agency if that person does not communicate to members of the legislative body the comments or position of any other member or members of the legislative body.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti, followed by Mr. Krikorian.
I will be very brief, not only just to agree with Mr. Alacon when he says to back up the president, I think it's a very good point. I forget what it was about, but it's always a good point. But the, in seriousness, folks, regardless of how the vote happens, 29th in council, there will be that day here. That's the most important thing out of here. The committee will get to have its hearings in the meantime, as it should be and as we should enforce. If we don't do that, my only impulse was to make that in a way that would bring everybody together by saying, let's put that, continue it. If it doesn't get continued, I will still agendize it as such, and people can go either way, it has the same outcome. The 29th we will have here in the full council, the airing, the vetting, the discussion, AEG, et cetera, that the motion has, even if the motion doesn't carry.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Krikorian, followed by Mr. Weezer.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. I don't really want to belabor the point much more, but just to follow up on the city attorney's counsel in response to Mr. Cardenas' line of questioning. See, the problem that's missing, Mr. Cardenas, the piece that's missing in this, Mr. Cardenas, is if Mr. Miller comes to my office and briefs me, what I can't do is say, well, Mr. Miller, I'm really interested in what Mr. Cardenas thinks about this, and what Mr. Alacon thinks about this, and what Mr. Wesson thinks about it, and what Mr. Garcetti thinks about it. Can you please share that with me? This is a deliberative body. This isn't a body where we should make up and stand up and make serial speeches. This is a body where we should debate and discuss and collectively reason things out and think about it. And that can only happen here. That can't happen in briefings that we receive from the CLA. Now, I assume, I don't think there's any question about whether or not any of us are doing our homework on this. I assume that's a given. I assume every one of us individually is doing everything that we need to do to be prepared for this vote. That's not what this is about. This is about getting the matter, getting the principles here before us to report to us about the issues that are described in the motion. It's not a criticism of the ad hoc committee. It's not a circumvention of the ad hoc committee. It's nothing more than asking us as a body to listen and participate. Now, I think Mr. Garcetti's resolution of this is exactly the right way to go. And I think that, you know, with what Ms. Perry has said today here about the future meetings of the ad hoc committee, that combined with Mr. Garcetti's suggestion, I think gives us that opportunity. So let's proceed as suggested by Mr. Garcetti. Let's go ahead and continue the work of the ad hoc committee, but have these issues that are called for in this motion reported upon to this council so we can hear the issues, so we can deliberate, so we can hear one another, actually listen to one another, and hopefully benefit from one another's opinions as we work through the issues on this. That's what this is about. So I call for your eye vote of Mr. Rosendahl's motion as it's been amended by Mr. Garcetti's suggestion.
Question, Mr. Cardenas.
Mr. President, point of personal privilege, I want to say that I agree with everything that council member Krikorian just said, but also I just want to clarify for the record, I was not inferring that the briefings by staff were in lieu of the work on the floor. And I agree with everything he said. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Weezer.
Point of order, that was out of order, but you did it already, so...
Point of order, we could do it anytime. When you're sitting up here, you got that shot.
That's a nice way to get your comment. I'll call him. Point of personal privilege and just say what I have to say. Anyway, I just have one simple question. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. President, we are not following the July 31st deadline that was. I read about it in the media.
To Mr. Miller, so it doesn't come out of my mouth because I think he knows even more. I think they wanted to know that the, that a tentative understanding of what our CLA thought he could present to us could be done by then. Not a vote, but I will defer to him. So I don't, I want to be, I want members to be reassured. When we bring this to 29th, it's not to vote on a final thing by the 31st.
So we're not taking a vote on the 29th?
No, absolutely not. And I've made it very clear to them from the beginning that we will do our best to get a recommendation and a proposal out by the 31st, but there is no way that will be approved by then. And whether it gets approved or not before you go on your August recess is going to be up to you once the proposal's out there.
Ms. Perry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and again, for clarity, because I think we're going backwards, and I don't know why, unless we just want to keep pretending or playing some sort of enabling game. Let's close this off by voting against the Rule 54 and then receive and file it so we put it to rest. There's no reason to continue to leave it on the desk as some kind of, I don't know what that is, pressure or something. I don't know what that is because, Mr., the president already said he was going to schedule a single-subject meeting, and I think he said he was going to do it on July the 29th. So let's take his word for it. I said we're going to have two ad hoc committee meetings before then. One will be in the San Fernando Valley at the neighborhood city council office so that we don't have to pay extra costs, and we'll do it at a time that Mr. Cardenas recommends so that we can have maximum attendance. So what's the problem now? Tell me what the problem is. I think I'm missing something. I'm going to vote to oppose the Rule 54, then I'm going to ask for it to be received and filed so we can put this to rest. I think we need to be clean, straightforward, clear on the record so that not only we all understand, although I think we really do, I don't know what else is at work here. Maybe somebody will tell me one day. I have my guesses, but I don't want to get into gossip and all that stuff because it's stupid. But let's put this to rest, let Jerry do his job, let the committee do its work, let Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Vice Chair, be in the committee and be as active as he has always been in defending the interests of the taxpayers, as we all do. And then, can we do this and do it right and do it the way it is intended to be done instead of descending into chaos? So again, I am going to ask that we vote to oppose the Rule 54, then I'm going to ask for it to be received and filed, and then I'm going to honor the president and take him at his word that we're going to have a full, single-subject meeting on July the 29th, and then can we please move on? This is stupid.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Perry. In conclusion. Mr. Labange.
Very quickly, Jerry, what we do on the 29th, we have a single-subject meeting, then sometime in August before the two-week recess, we decide whether or not we have a package to go forward. But final approval for any convention center stadium project is when?
Right. What, if you approve the MOU, what would happen is the council would then instruct the parties to actually go forward and draft the agreements. The MOU that's going to come out is going to be fairly simple, that's going to discuss deal points. The agreements behind that are going to be extraordinary, and they're going to take a year to draft. So those final agreements wouldn't come back to the council until the EIR is done and is here to be certified. You cannot approve those agreements and commit yourselves to anything until you certify the EIR. And that's also in AEG's interests because if you, if there's any commitment prior to certification of the EIR, it opens up a huge challenge that you predetermined it and the EIR is not valid. So they, so everyone understands until the EIR is done, which is projected to be next May, there can be no final approval.
Good, and I think it would be helpful for the CLA's office to get a, what the timeline is so people know. What we would be asked of to vote on whether or not with a memorandum of understanding that we go forward to fully negotiate a point-by-point project that would include our convention center and a stadium at 11th and Figueroa area. And then it would come back for a decision that we would make that we could say yes or no in the spring, late spring, early summer of 2012. That's the final, so we're way, I could use a football analogy, but I won't. We've talked too long. Thank you very much.
Mr. Englander.
Yeah, I'd like to just call for the question, please. Thank you.
Okay. You're the last on the queue. If there's no objection, the question is called, which means no further debate. Let me walk you through the procedures, colleagues. One can receive and file this only after there's a vote to actually, under Rule 54, have this before us or after that fails. Before we take a vote, Rule 54 is whether or not, it's kind of like reconsideration of an item. So it needs 10 votes to be able to then have it before us for a vote. That has not yet happened. So before that last motion is continuation to go to the 29th. Whether that goes forward or not, colleagues, so I respect people however they vote, it will be scheduled on the 29th, so feel free to vote however you want on that. If that fails, the continuation, then we have a vote on whether or not to assert, under Rule 54, this item. Okay? Those are the first two votes. So the first one is, yeah. So the first one is whether or not to continue to 29th, when this will be scheduled for presentation, following the two ad hoc committee meetings that will be scheduled.
You're talking about continuing this motion, this Rule 54, until the 29th?
Just the agenda item, not the motion.
Well...
Yeah, this was on the advice of the city attorney.
Nope. I'm asking for a no vote.
Okay, all right. Please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Six ayes, seven noes.
That does not carry. Our next vote is on whether to assert Rule 54 and pull this out of committee and to have that before us here. Please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Five ayes, eight noes.
Okay, that fails as well. Now, Ms. Perry had a motion to receive and file the motion. Okay? Please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eight ayes, five noes.
Okay, that is received and filed, but we will still be scheduling on the 29th after the ad hoc committee, the hearing on if there is obviously a presentation or proposal for us to have a first, just hearing on it, not a vote. Okay?
Do you need a motion on that, or I'll second your motion, Mr. Garcetti?
No, I could do it as a president, but thank you. We'll just make sure that that gets scheduled. Okay, next item, please.
Item 24, call special for cards.
Okay, item 24, Mr. Walsh. That's out of time, I'm sorry, Mr. Walsh, they just told me. My apologies. We'll make sure you get entered into the record on item number 24. Any council members wishing to be heard on item 24? If not, let's prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item 25, call special for Councilmember Rosendahl. I understand there's a request to continue this item to Tuesday.
Okay, if there's no objection, we'll continue that till Tuesday. That is July 12th. No, that's today, sorry, next Tuesday, the 19th. So one week without objection, so ordered. Okay. Next order of business, please.
Council has motions for posted and referral.
All right, those are posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Rosendahl requests to be excused on August 9th for personal business. That meets council policy.
All right, he is excused.
Council resigned, requests to be excused on September 16th for personal business. That meets council policy.
All right, he is excused as well.
That clears the desk.
All right, do we have any announcements, colleagues? Any announcements? Okay. If not, if I can ask everybody, please rise for our adjourning motions. If I can ask everybody in council chambers to please rise for our adjourning motions. Thank you, sir. If I can ask you to rise for adjourning motions, please. Thank you. I know Mr. Labange would like to lead on behalf of the entire council adjournment for Ms. Hahn's mother who passed away. Mr. Labange.
Absolutely. Every day's a blessing, and our dear colleague Janice Han lost her mother yesterday. She got a call very early in the morning and rushed to her mother's residence, where paramedics were there trying to revive her, and she sent it quickly into heaven. But Ramona Han was a beautiful woman, born in 1924 on the 5th of October in Tokyo, where her parents were missionaries. She lived in Japan until she was 11 years old, when her family moved back to the United States. She attended Pepperdine University, where she met her future husband Kenny Han, Kenneth Han. When their children were born, Ramona was a devoted homemaker and mother. She was a lifelong member of the Church of Christ, and most recently attended the Church of Christ on Redondo Beach. The daughter of missionaries, Janice Han's mother was very devoted, much to God and to her family. And without a doubt, she was the driving force behind the love that she gave Kenny Han, the love that she gave her children in their development as well. As you know, Kenneth Han was the great supervisor, over 40 years, represented the 8th district in Los Angeles, followed by his brother Gordon and her brother Jim, the comptroller, city attorney, and mayor of Los Angeles early on. Janice's parents were a team working together to raise their family in the lives that Kenny represented. They were very public, and Ramona was a sweet person, what I would call Janice on holidays, which I do, and I would talk to her mother and greet with her, and she was very passionate and supportive of all of us, of all of us. She truly was a caring woman. There are many fond memories of Ramona, that in their home, they would have an open house, the people of Kenny's district would come in, and she would be a welcoming ambassador for all. Kenny worked 24 hours a day almost, seven days a week, but it was Ramona that held that household together and made sure that every need was met by the family members. Until her death, she was the heart and soul of that Han family. She's preceded her death by her husband, Kenneth Han, as mentioned, her sister Jean. She's arrived by her son James and daughter Janice, brothers Harry, Harry Fox, sister Logan Fox, Sterling Fox, Clinton Fox, and Arnold Fox, grandchildren Kathy, Danny, and Mark, Katrina Jackson, and great-grandchildren McKenna, Brooklyn, Joshua, Isabella, and Luke. This was a real big family. She came from a big family. Kenny came from a big family of seven boys, so the Han family. And I'm sure when she got into heaven, there were the arms of Kenny, shaking her with a proclamation, woking Ramona to her final resting place. When I spoke with Janice last night, she was terribly hurt, as we all are when we lose our parents, but she is seeking the strength, and it was just ironic on this day that we hope for our colleague, the day before she lost her mother. God bless Ramona Han, a great woman, who gave us great children, greatest, great leaders of Los Angeles.
Thank you, Mr. Labons. If I can just add, times that I was able to spend with Ramona, she was an incredible public servant. We often think of spouses and mothers and people like that as being the helpers of. She herself was a public servant. She opened her home to constituents so many times. She enabled and trained and helped so much in her children that was reflected in who they are as public servants. And so, Los Angeles has lost one of its great public servants in Ramona Han, and somebody who I know Ms. Han cared for so dearly in these last few years. And all of us as a body wrap our arms around the Han family, and especially our colleague Janice Han. So much happening to her on a single day. I know, no matter what happens tonight, she would want her mom to have been there, but she's going to be looking down tonight on election night and for many, many years to come. Mr. Rosenthal?
Quick comment. Last time I saw her, she was sitting right here in the chambers. She was full of life and inspiration for all of us, and I know Janice's face just lit up like a Christmas tree every time she was around her mother. And it's a terrible, terrible loss, and I know that her inspirational existence really has inspired me, her daughter, her son, and obviously, her husband. Life is a mystery. Death is a mystery. We know nothing about timing of anything, and my prayers go out to Janice and to Jim. And we now have another saint for all of us who believe in that, to ask for support as we live our lives. God bless her.
Absolutely. Anybody else on Ramona Han? Mr. Zahn?
The condolences to the family, and I can remember the comments that Janice and Jim have made about their mom for so many years, dating back to the '40s, where Mr. Han, Kenny Han, was a leader in the city for many years with the city, and then to the county, and how the mom would always be there for their children in the communities, not only the city but the county. So, it's a sad, sad loss, and she lived a great, great life. Due respect to her for her activities, and condolences to the whole Han family. May she rest in peace.
Thank you. Other adjourning motions, colleagues? Mr. Labons?
Father Tote, who was the reverend for St. Joseph's Medical Center in Providence in Burbank, recently was with him out on Riverside in Tallahassee, where he blessed a new traffic light on Riverside. God bless his memory. He lived a good life, survived by three brothers. And also, Raymond Madrid, 94 years old, a great leader of the North Atwater community, was a security officer with LAPD for many years. He passed as well, as we adjourned his memory.
Thank you. Mr. Zahn?
President Alhambra, police officer Ryan Embert Stringer, passed away on July 10th. He was born April 9th, 1985. Attended Riojondo Police Academy in January 2009. Upon graduating the academy, he was sworn in as an Alhambra police officer, worked the Field Service Division Patrol Section, grew up and current resided in the city of Whittier. Life tragically ended Sunday when his patrol car collided with another patrol car while responding to a robbery call. He was 26 years of age, survived by his parents Sonny and Debbie Stringer, four sisters, Donna, Kirsten, Kim, and Dana. And it's interesting that he had a very serious motorcycle crash about a year ago, and he worked diligently to come back to work, and almost a year later, this tragedy occurred where he lost his life responding to a call. May he rest in peace. Alhambra Police Officer Ryan Embert Stringer.
Thank you. And colleagues, as the we adjourn, also in memory of Sherwood Charles Schwartz, who peacefully passed away this morning in his sleep at 94 years old. In his 90s, he was honored with a star on the Hollywood Walk of Fame, but he was born in 1914 on November 14th in New Jersey. He created the television series Gilligan's Island, The Brady Bunch, worked on radio shows in the 1940s, wrote for I Married Joan, The Red Skelton Show, The Adventures of Ozzy and Harriet, and in 1939, Bob Hope's radio show, Armed Forces Radio Network, before he got his break in television. He's survived by his wife Mildred, father of Donald Schwartz, Lloyd Schwartz, Ross Schwartz, and Hope Chuber, the brother of Al Schwartz, uncle of Douglas Schwartz, Bruce Schwartz, and Judith Randall, and extended family of grandchildren. May Sherwood Charles Schwartz, a great creative spirit, rest in peace. Any other adjourning motions? If not, Madam Click, if you please call the roll. We will next be in session tomorrow. That is Wednesday, July 13th, 2011. Have a great day, and this meeting of the Los Angeles City Council is adjourned.